Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting. I call the meeting to order November 16th, Special City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that Mayor Protem Muldoon is currently absent.
Okay. And so now, this is the time for public comments on agenda items. This is for the special meeting agenda only, which is our resolution to the Board of Supervisors for the County of Orange, including John Wayne Airport, to remain in the same supervisory district as the City of Newport Beach. So do we have any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none? Seeing one? Oh, there's great. Thank you. Just in the nick of time.
I just walked in. So can you repeat what you just said?
So this is a special meeting, and Item 1 of the meeting is all about the resolution requesting that the Board of Supervisors for the County of Orange include John Wayne Airport in the same supervisory district as the City of Newport Beach.
Okay, so, I mean, did you just watch the supervisors' meeting?
I think.
You're aware of it? So, you know, they came up with Map 4 and I guess Map 5. It seems to me maybe you would advocate for one of those, although there might be changes to them. But Map 4C is a horrible map. It doesn't address the Hispanic issue. It doesn't address Asian issue. It politically targets one of the supervisors, et cetera. And so I think that this city council is a little late to the table on this issue. I wish you would have taken this up last week before they already settled on two maps.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that wants to make a public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Leon, do we have a report? Does council need a report on this?
I'll make a statement.
Thank you.
I think it would be, as Chair of the Aviation Committee and Vice Chair, Mr. Blom, we did bring this up. I mean, as the districts have, the plans for the districts have been shuffling deck for the last several days. Frankly, I didn't know it was a concern until I started seeing some of these districts in the last few days, and I appreciate the mayor calling the special meeting so we can go, the city can go on record. Irrespective of which district is which district, it's important to keep Newport Beach and the corridor cities aligned with John Wayne Airport in the same supervisory district. So I appreciate you, Mayor, calling the special meeting, and would like to just go on record that we support keeping the two together, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Prenter.
I had a question of Sue. On the two maps that they chose, do both of those keep John Wayne Airport in the same district with Newport Beach?
I could answer that. Councilmember Prenter, yes, they do.
They do. So really, what action we take here today won't have much impact if both of their solutions do what we're asking them to do.
The two current maps, and they're asking for some variations on one of them. All of them do include Newport Beach and the airport in the same district.
Is there anything that we, if you've analyzed those, is there anything that we should be concerned about with either one of them?
I think just to the question of having the airport and the City of Newport Beach in one district, I think this addresses that, you know, the different versions there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blom?
Thank you, Mayor. And we called this special meeting because that was our number-one concern. And so, Sue, we understand your frustration. There might be a lot of frustration out there with any type of redistricting, any adjustments to how we vote. We understand that. I mean, that's a very real and present issue we're dealing with up and down the board, even on this dais. Our main concern when it came to this special meeting was just ensuring that the people of Newport will always have a voice with their representative in the supervisory district. And that had to be the cut-and-dry of it. And so even though, you know, we're not going to make statements about either map up here, our goal at least is moving forward that we will at least be represented with the airport, and I think that's the number-one trajectory we're hoping for. So we appreciate your comments, and thanks for coming down for that.
Thank you. Do we have any other council comment or questions? All right. Do we, I'm going to close the public hearing unless you've got something, Ms. Dixon.
I was going to make a motion to support the resolution.
Okay.
One second.
All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion in a second? We've got that. And let's vote. So this is a vote to send a resolution for keeping.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. So we're going to now adjourn to the study session.
We have to wait till 4 o'clock in order to start the study session. So we have to recess.
So we can recess for eight minutes. Okay, let the meeting come to order for the November 16th study session. Madam Clerk?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. So we are now going to the current business, and the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Prenter, do you need clarification regarding any items?
None.
Councilmember O'Neill?
No.
Councilmember Dixon?
I do not.
Councilmember Blom?
None.
Councilmember Duffield?
I have none.
Mayor Protem Muldoon?
None.
And I have none. The next item is a housing element update discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Avery and City Councilmembers. I'm Simone Jurges, your Community Development Director, and with me is Jim Campbell, who's the deputy director. As you recall, we did a presentation to you at the last study session with regards to our housing element and the comments we received from HCD. Since then, we've taken your additional comments. We've updated the housing element. We've published a draft last Friday, and we're ready to release it. Jim is going to make a very brief presentation. He has 10 slides on what those changes are. If you have any comments, we'll welcome that input. If not, we're going to go ahead and send the housing element up to HCD for an additional 60-day review. And I'll hand it over to Jim.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, Jim Campbell want to go over the housing element update. As we indicated our last meeting, we did receive comments from Housing and Community Development of the housing element, and it was in need of some additional edits, and we went ahead and made that. I want to let the council and the community know, we've made a very diligent effort to go through every single one of HCD's comments. There was 10 pages of comments, and so we've responded to all of them. And we believe we've done a very diligent effort to make sure that it was very responsive. First of all, I want to kind of highlight a couple of the big items, and they just did not accept our assumption of 1,000 units of ADU production over the next eight years. And with discussions with them, they were willing to accept 240 units over the next eight years. So what that did is it required us to reallocate the housing throughout the rest of the community, and I'll show you that momentarily. So we had to take the 760 units there. Most of those were affordable, and we had to reallocate them to other focus areas. And so this is that revised housing scenario. This is a summary of what the policies are in the document there. The affordability assumptions did not change, but the unit yields that we were allocating to each of these areas, West Newport Mesa Airport area, Dover West Cliff, Newport Center, Coyote Canyon, and Banning Ranch, these are our focus areas. So we've increased those numbers, and you'll see the comparison on the far-right-hand side in the delta, which is the unit increases in those areas. So again, to highlight, the ADUs went from 1,000 to 240 units, and the rezone strategies did actually go up slightly, about 900 units total citywide. Happy to answer any questions that you have, but this is the assumptions that we're moving forward with in the revised draft. This really hasn't changed from what you saw last week.
Ms. Dixon?
Mr. Campbell, so I think many of us in the community feel that we could do more than, I don't know if we could do 1,000 ADUs, but we could do more than HCD thinks we can. So just to clarify for the public's consumption, we're not going to limit the number of ADUs, correct?
Absolutely. We wouldn't limit them.
So if people want to just storm the barricade and start applying for ADUs, we will welcome them, and then that will offset our total affordability requirement?
It will. So if we overproduce in ADUs, that'll help us reduce our unmet RENA need, and that might reduce all of these rezone strategies that we're talking about. So when those rezone strategies come forward, we'll look back at our ADU production and make some adjustments, and these numbers may come down a little bit. So we will still encourage those ADUs.
So I think that's an important message at the community here from us, that while there may be a goal, we could exceed that goal.
We certainly can, and we think we will.
I think so, too. All right, thank you.
Certainly. Okay, moving on. HCD had a lot of comments about our assumptions in those focus areas. They wanted additional information to support the assumptions we're making, and so we, again, made further edits to the document to bolster our position that we do have these sites in the airport area and those various areas. We included examples of other projects that we've done to show that HCD that, you know, we do have housing production and we can continue to do so. Banning Ranch and Coyote Canyon, we did bolster those discussions. We do believe that there are opportunities at both those locations. There are environmental constraints there, and we did rely upon our consultants to assist us in creating a narrative that we believe helps support the city's assumptions for housing at both locations. We also did change the acreage in Coyote Canyon. There are some opportunities potentially to build on the landfill in certain areas, so we bolstered that as well. So we do believe we've got good information to help support both those areas, but all of the areas that we're looking at. So we also provided some additional background on the housing element advisory committee efforts in identifying the sites. Remember, they went through site by site in all of these focus areas to see what would be feasible and suitable, and so we kind of expanded on that discussion. Again, this is part of the bolstering of our discussion, because a lot of our housing is all predicated on reusing some existing sites, so we had to provide additional information. And so the expanded discussion here with the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee is in the document. One of the bigger items in there is HCD looks at Charter Section 423, the requirement for a vote of the electorate, as an impediment, and they wanted us to expand that narrative, and we did. And we went in and also indicated that we have a history of being able to overcome this. We had, in 2006, we did a vote, a successful vote of the electorate, to expand the housing opportunities for the fourth cycle of RENA. And so we provided that information. And so, again, our conclusion is that it really isn't an impediment to affordable housing production, until potentially it is, and that is if the vote doesn't actually pass. And so one of the things HCD wanted was, well, what happens? When is this vote going to happen, and what are the alternatives? And so we provided those narratives. And the conclusion here is, is that we do plan for a vote of the electorate based on the increases in housing that we would put into the land use element and the zoning, and that would be for March 2024. And so that's in the document at this stage. Moving on, they wanted us to address residential care facilities. The thought there is, is that our current ordinance could be an impediment to housing for the disabled. And so we provided additional background on our current practices and our ordinances and the litigation that was a part of that process. And so we provided a more robust narrative. Again, we don't, the narrative that's in there today is something that was in the past housing element, that HCD actually found to be consistent with state law, so that our ordinance was not viewed as an impediment. So we reintroduced that language back in, and so we feel that we've addressed that comment quite well. Again, we'll be looking for additional comments from HCD with this draft. Their criteria is subjective, and so our hope is that we've met their criteria, but we won't know until we get the next letter back. Moving on, the section on affirmatively furthering for housing was a difficult one for us and the consultants to prepare. We had limited guidance from HCD, and it came up fairly late. So when we got that guidance, we made those updates. Additional maps and exhibits are there, and we refreshed some of our implementation actions. The biggest constraint in this community is really the cost of entry, if you will, the high cost of the community. And so one of the things we want to do is to target some outreach for low-income residents and try to help coordinate additional financial resources for folks to enter into this marketplace. So there's some additional community meetings that we're putting up in this area. So with that, we're going to go ahead, you know, again, we believe we've identified and addressed all of the comments from HCD. As I did say, it is subjective, and so we won't know until January 16th if we've really hit the mark. But here on this slide is the schedule going forward. So we're going to submit this draft. If the council is amenable, we'll submit it tomorrow. We'll get our comment letter back in January. And we hope to go from that 10-page letter, where hopefully we won't have any comments from HCD in that certified, but, you know, barring, if it is, still needs some work, we'll finish that up in late January and get it ready for the city council's adoption in February. So there's a couple other items on the list here. We've got the Housing Element Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow night for another opportunity for public comment. And we have Planning Commission hearings planned for December 9th for a public hearing. We anticipate recommendations from both bodies to come forward to the city council on February 8th for adoption. And once that's accomplished, we would submit it to HCD for its final review as an adopted element, and we would know 60 days after that if we've got a compliant housing element. So happy to answer any other questions that the council may have, but that's the process going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Prenter?
We've talked a couple of different times about what we could add to our housing element that would show the state that we were actively recruiting HDUs and accommodating HDUs. Can you tell the general public what it is that we are putting in here that says that we are actually doing that? And one of the things that has been suggested by Nancy Scarborough is that we utilize some of our surplus money to help people who have existing ADUs come up to code so that some of these small ADUs that we currently have, which are beneficial to us, could be counted, whereas the new ADUs that are being built are much larger and actually won't be as affordable as some of these bachelor units and kicker units are that we have. So do we have something in there that talks about how we're encouraging those and how we're helping people to bring it up to code?
Certainly, it's a very good point. We do have policy actions in the document to incentivize. Right now, we're working on an amendment to our ADU ordinance that would provide greater opportunities, and that's one item. Council did also waive the fees for these items to help reduce the cost. We're looking at creating plans that are ready to go. We're updating our website, and so we're doing all of these items, and they're in the policy statements here, which helps support increased production. And we're going to, we want to implement all of those plans now, using the city resources to help offset the costs. And there are costs associated with updating an existing structure, because it has to meet the building and fire codes. That is definitely a programmatic element that the council can consider, and that we can bring forward at a later date for the council's consideration.
Okay. So you'll be bringing that back to us to consider at a later date?
So, Councilmember Prenter, so the items that Mr. Campbell talked about is the standard plans we're working on for the community, updating the website. With marketing and advertising, we're going to be doing all that. It just takes us time to put that together. Any type of grant program to utilize the general fund money? That's not something that's in the housing element currently. We don't have a program for that. So that's going to be really up to the council's discretion if you want us to do anything further with that item.
Did we stress to HCD that we are actively promoting? I mean, they understand that in the past, we didn't allow these kinds of units, and that now we are encouraging them?
Yes. We've had extensive conversations with HCD about that specifically. We were obviously trying to support a higher level of production, so they're well aware of our past efforts, past prohibitions, and they're very aware of our programs going forward. You know, I think they fell back on the statute, which really is a much lower average. They were willing to come up from what we thought might be 40 or 50 over the next eight years, based upon our past production, up to 240. So, you know, that's a small victory, but they're well aware of our stance on this.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blom?
Thank you, Mayor. So let's say January 16th comes along, and the comment back, or the comments from HCD are not what we're looking for, and it might be another 10-page letter. Where are we at that stage?
Well, what we would do is continue to update and refresh the document to address any residual comments. We hope there isn't 10 pages. There really shouldn't be 10 pages. You know, but whatever those comments are, we would then start to continue to update it, make adjustments, and bring that forward to the city council. We wouldn't have an opportunity to send it back to them for a review, but we would do everything we could to address them and then bring it forward to the city council.
And to add to that, Councilmember Blom, is, you know, if the city cannot get certified in February, then we're, quote, "uncertified." The state passed a new law that we weren't aware of, and which really forces cities, if they can't get certified, to implement all the housing within a year, starting from October. So that would, per law, force us to zone everything in eight months. We have until October 2022 to upzone everything with all the housing and go to a vote, because the charter doesn't go away. So it's the impossible task. We just don't have enough time to get all of that done, and that's what is, could be a potential penalty if we don't get certified by February.
Wow. Okay. Well, that is not the best scenario I think any of us would like to hear. And so I guess the question guile's us at that point is, is there something we should be doing on the other side? Should we be looking for other opportunities to build more housing, to have alternatives to this? Is there, is there a way to put forth another plan as we're waiting for HCD? Our compliance directly affects a lot with what we'll be able to do, and I think one of my main issues with this entire process is how much time it takes for our city staff to take care of. It's a huge burden on the city itself for both time and labor and what we do well. We're focusing on doing something for the state itself. And I don't want to say I feel like we're in a hamster wheel here, but sometimes, you know, we feel, we put our best fourth plan with community input, and we're almost setting ourselves up to not be too excited about what they send back. So are there other alternatives that will show HCD that we're working on this? I mean, if we look towards a different rezoning plan somewhere else, if we're looking at new districting, parking requirements, things like that, does that factor into this at all, or is this strictly for this element and how this kind of rolls out? I know, I'm sorry.
So I think the couple areas that our consultant has had some concerns is our Charter 423. We have a process. We have a charter. We have to comply with it. That takes us time to do. Banning Ranch, we have housing on Banning Ranch. From a staff level, we're trying to formulate, are there alternatives to Banning Ranch if HCD does not accept it? We have done a huge amount of work to justify Banning Ranch. We've pulled in a lot of consultant help to justify our housing element, that Banning Ranch is viable. Coastal Commission said as a portion of Banning Ranch is viable. It's not all protected. So I think we need to wait until we get comments back January 16th, and we'll have a better sense of where we're going to be with HCD. Right now, we're very optimistic from a staff standpoint. I think we just have to wait till January.
Wonderful. Thank you so very much, guys. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to follow, I was planning to ask you the question about Banning Ranch, just to expand on that. We are still looking at Banning Ranch, and then kind of, if you would give some context for that, my recollection is it's approximately 400 acres. And to put affordable housing or some form of housing, probably maybe 25 acres of the 400 could be devoted to housing, and how many possible affordable units and market price units could be on there? Maybe, what would you say, several hundred?
Yes. Back in, when the Coastal Commission reviewed it, they kind of set out maybe 11 acres with all the different various environmental buffers. There was still some unresolved issues with that, and so we do believe that there is additional acreage above and beyond that. And so we've provided that narrative in the document, and we really haven't changed our affordable housing assumptions here. We've got 1,475 units in the Banning Ranch area, of which, you know, I don't know, close to 600 would be affordable out of the 1,400. So it is a pretty sizable contingent there. We do believe that there is far more than 11 acres out there. It is a 400-acre site. It might require some additional negotiations, but obviously, when we go forward with that, we'll have to map what resources actually are there, and then identify what the proper buffers are and see how much acreage is. But we do believe there's more than what the Coastal Commission thought there was in 2016.
Well, just to follow up what Mr. Blom was saying, I mean, really to expand on the city's advocacy to help the Coastal Commission or HCD directly understand that this is a viable resource for housing. It's been in our general plan, our sphere of influence, for a number of years, and it's doable to respect the environmental constraints, but it's not all, the development would not reduce overall the open space opportunity in Banning Ranch. So how can we push forward and anticipating, they're just relying on kind of no, 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 how do we make the case? Can we talk with our elected representatives, our state senator, our state assembly person? Have we had an outreach to them so they can help the advocates as well? I mean, who can advocate with us for housing on Banning Ranch?
And Councilmember Dixon, I think you've said it. I think our best opportunities is to, you know, to speak to our local representatives, which is Senator Min, Assemblywoman Cottie Petrie-Norris, and have them advocate for all the work that we are doing. Majority of Banning Ranch is protected. We understand that, and our plan doesn't wipe any of that out. We're just focusing on that area of Banning Ranch where you can develop housing. We're not trying to develop housing everywhere. It's just there are certain portions that are not protected. And so we need to foster those relationships with the local senator, with the local assemblywoman, and have them help us approach HCD, and that's our plan. We want to see what our comments are January 16th, and if we don't get a lot of acceptance from HCD, we need to be engaging with our local representatives.
I agree with you, and I appreciate that, because I think we should strongly advocate our position. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Prenter?
Simone, I have talked to Cottie Petrie-Norris about this, and I think it's a great idea for us to continue that conversation. And it seems to me that Senator Min is maybe just not as aware of the ramifications of these housing bills as he could be and could perhaps change his mind. So is it possible to set up a meeting with each of them individually for those of us on the council that are interested? If it needs to be, you know, a public meeting so that more of us could attend, that would be fine, but I just think it's really important for us to keep those lines of communication open with both of them, but especially with Senator Min.
Certainly, absolutely. That's a good idea.
Thank you. Do we have any other council comments? All right. Any comments from the public on this item?
Good afternoon, Mayor Avery and councilmembers. Nancy Scarborough. I would like to see the actual response to the housing element comments, and I don't know if that's available publicly on the website. I haven't seen that yet. Do we have?
Yeah, the revised housing element is at the city's website. If you punch in, you know, Housing Element Update into the search bar, you'll go right to the page, and you'll see a red line.
Including the comments that just went back?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
And my second comment is to expand a little bit on what Joy mentioned regarding incentivizing ADUs. I think that there are opportunities for the city to help with some type of financing, maybe it's no interest and deed restricted, deed, something on the deed so that when they sell the house, the money comes back, so it doesn't really end up costing the city any money. It's just a loan that's at no interest or some, you know, there are several ways to work that, and I would love to have an open discussion at a workshop, maybe not where you're sitting up there and we're here, but some interchange of ideas so that we can help develop that, because I think there are people in the community who would really support this. It's not offensive to most people. It's a lot less offensive than what SB 9 and SB 10 are going to do, so it might be a way that we can manage some of this with as little impact as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have two comments. First, we see up here a critical timeline that we have to follow to achieve certification. First, we see up here a critical timeline that we have to follow to achieve certification. We've been told, part of it I don't understand the logic of, which is, we heard tomorrow, sometime during the day, this is going to be sent off to HCD. And then tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, your Housing Element Update Advisory Committee is meeting. According to their agenda, they're, number one, reviewing the letter from HCD that suggests changes that might need to be made to make this certifiable. And then, second, they are going to be asked to discuss and find the housing element certifiable. If those housing experts that you've chosen for that committee don't share staff's optimism and suggest some further tweaks are needed to make it acceptable to HCD, wouldn't it be wise to wait and see if they have any comments, and then send it to HCD the next day after addressing what that committee has said? Why we would not be doing that, I do not understand, because we're running the risk of overlooking something, we're running the risk of the staff overlooking something that those people might see. Second comment is about Banning Ranch. We heard we now recognize that there are environmental constraints. In the previous draft, I noticed the numbers that were assigned to Banning Ranch did not add up at all to the 1,475 units. I noticed in the revision, although it still says the density would be zero, it does now have a lot of numbers that seem to add up to 1,475. But some of those numbers are in places like the federal wetlands on the map. And when HCD looks at that and finds housing in water, it might be a new concept, but I'm not sure they're going to find that realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
Good afternoon. David Tanner. I wanted to make a couple of comments about the draft housing element. When you read it, and I took the time to read it, it's written as if we can do this. And I want you to be aware, as well as staff, that the housing element is part of the general plan, and it has to be consistent with the other general plan elements. And we don't know what the effect is of the housing element is going to be on the other elements, because we haven't really seen the environmental impact report for just one, or a traffic analysis, which isn't part of CEQA anymore. So I want you to be aware that this housing element is written right now, like we can do it, and it's going to be consistent with all the other elements. And I think one of the problems that I've said since I first started talking about this in 2017 is that there's going to be significant impacts from implementing, from complying with the housing laws. And we have new laws that are in place since 2017. So one of the policies I would suggest as a solution to getting the citizens' approval, which we're going to have to have, is that a policy be added that new housing mitigate its impacts. Very simple, plain language. This is going to tell the people when they vote that it's not going to be on their shoulders. The impacts are not going to be on their shoulders. This is something that the state has mandated the city do. And I don't think a housing project is going to be able to afford to pay for the mitigation that's going to be required. I see many millions of dollars in circulate infrastructure improvements. So I look at it and say, let the money come from the state to fund this. We shouldn't bear the burden as residents of the city for this mandate the state has put on it. So I think you put a simple policy in that says new housing mitigates its impacts, and expect that this money is going to come from the state. If we get the housing element approved with that policy in it, we can say, here, go ahead and build. They're not going to be able to build because they won't get the money for some time from the state. And perhaps by then, we can have a new election, and we can get some people in Sacramento to have common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? All right. Any further comments from council or direction for staff? All right, seeing none?
I do sort of echo Jim's comments about us submitting the housing element the same day that it's going to the Housing Element Update Committee. I think it sort of diminishes our respect for them and their process. And they've put a lot of time and energy into this, that we would submit it before their meeting. So if we could delay that for a day, I think that would be advisable, just out of respect for all the time and energy they've put into this.
That's a good thought and good comment. You know, this is a draft, and so my hope is, is that we can incorporate any comments from the committee into the final draft that would be presented to the City Council in February. That's our game plan. We'd like to save every day we possibly can in January to make any updates that are necessary. So, you know, even a day matters, but we will do what the council asks us to do.
I guess that would be up to the rest of my council colleagues.
Mr. O'Neill?
My understanding is that they plan on sunsetting tomorrow, actually, as a committee. So the expectation is that they've submitted all of their comments to us, got incorporated into the first draft, the comments that have been received back. We were planning on submitting, but the council, at my recommendation, so I appreciate you're doing this, we brought it back for our viewing, not for the Housing Element Update Committee's viewing. If they had comments, great. But my understanding is their intention, for the most part, is to take a look at this, say thank you very much to the members, and then sunset their role, which they've accomplished their role, which was to get us to the first draft. So am I misunderstanding what they plan on doing tomorrow night?
I think you had a very good understanding of what we expect to happen tomorrow night.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out, because if we submitted after this meeting, I don't believe there'd be any sense of disrespect, only because that was the intention of their meeting tomorrow.
Are they all aware that that's the intention of their meeting? What does their agenda say?
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but it basically sets up a recommendation for City Council certification of the document, and also recommends that if there's any residual comments from HCD, that we make those comments, and we bring it forward to the City Council for final consideration. You know, if there's any comments or edits or changes that the committee might come up with tomorrow, you know, we can incorporate that into the draft document before submission. So, you know, we would have that input.
Okay.
Thank you. Well, I think the city is very fortunate to have the expertise of Simone, of you and your staff, and just going back and forth with HCD. And I imagine it took an awful lot of time and effort to answer the questions and keep getting that ball back across the net.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. All right. No further council comment. We move on to the next item, discussion regarding the fractional home ownership.
Thank you, Mayor Avery and city council members. I'm going to wait for the image to come up. All right, I think we're here. So we are talking about fractional home ownership. I know there's a lot of, if our residents are in the audience, Mr. Mayor, my understanding, this is not a public hearing, it's just a study session, but my understanding is a representative of Picasso is here also, and they have their own presentation they would like to address with the council. And so they'll ask you, Mayor, for some time. Fractional ownership. First of all, I want to just talk about, you know, there's fractional ownership of personal property. And, you know, we know that there is fractional ownership of jets, of luxury yachts. And now we're starting to see fractional ownership of single-family homes. So this is not a new concept. Fractional ownership of real estate is not new. But we've seen fractional ownership more on larger expensive properties, because they're large and expensive. And so you get equity partners, you get partners to purchase property. What's new now is what we're starting to see is now that there is this model that usually is reserved for large apartments or large commercial, now we're seeing this model of fractional ownership on single-family homes. So relatively a new transition here, mostly in higher real estate values. And so if you're in a lower real estate value, you don't need as much equity partners. Here, you're starting to see that come about in Newport Beach and some of the kind of the high net worth towns. So these are really for vacation homes. You don't use a fractional ownership to purchase your primary residence. It is a vacation residence, a second, third, or fourth home. And what we're starting to see now that these fractional ownerships are sold online. So you jump on Zillow, or you jump on even, and I'll say Picasso, but not to single them out, but you jump on their website, and they'll sell fractional ownership. Again, this was not a new concept, but mostly reserved for the commercial or a larger multifamily. Click here. And so just a quick Google search, Picasso's not the only game in town as far as what you find online. There's several, there's five others that I've found. Picasso's the only one that I've seen that's operating in Newport. Again, this is not something, not to single them out. Now, how does it work? Typically, a property, and just like any commercial property, is purchased, the single family's purchased, in a limited liability corporation, an LLC. And typically with LLCs, you have operating agreements. Those operating agreements divvy up who owns what percentage of the home. The operating agreement specifies the rules how to operate the house, the usage of the home, the ownership structure of the home. The single-family homes, what we've seen is that they're sold at one-eighth ownership or more. So you could buy two eighths, you could buy one-half. We did, our staff did a search, look at single-family residents, single-family zoning, and find out how many in the city are owned under an LLC or even a trust. And so we found 56% of all the properties, single-family homes in Newport Beach, are owned in an LLC or trust. The only thing we can pull up is the name of the trust or the name of the LLC. We don't know anything about who owns the LLC, what are the partnership structure of the LLC, who are the trustees. A lot of family trusts, a lot of, you know, most property for asset protection, you have a trust, or the LLCs in a trust. So just to give you kind of a context of how many we see out there throughout the city. Typically, from an operations structure, the co-owners enjoy 100% use of the home. So that's that single-family home. They're the ones that agree on the usage, the days, the number of days, the number of weeks. And they can sell their interest. If they own an eighth interest, my understanding is that they can turn around and resell it after a year. Under their operating agreement, they cannot perform any short-term lodging or renting. That's not allowed. And at the end of the day, for Newport Beach, we have a permit program for short-term lodging. So even if somebody would try to rent out their share, their one-eighth share of the fractional ownership for short-term lodging, they would need to get a permit. And we would not issue that permit, because you have to be a sole owner of that property. And the property may or not, may or may not be professionally managed, in the sense that if you have eight property owners, eight members that own a share of the property, they may hire a management company, or they may try to manage it themselves. And it's just going to be up to those eight owners of the property. Again, and I'm mixing a little bit of words here, so the LLC owns it, and your managing members own a share of the property. So we have heard community concerns, and some of the concerns are there listed above, you know, the non-resident vacation behavior, the large gatherings, the noise, the parking, that transient occupancy. If you have eight different owners of, eight parties that own a single-family home, you see turnover of which families are moving in, or which owner is moving in, or which shareholder is moving into the property. If you have eight, you take 12 months divided by eight, you could see there is going to be turnover. And then there's, we have heard some issues about the use that's similar to a timeshare use. So from a city standpoint, the only thing we can regulate is the use of the property. We can't regulate the ownership of a property. We don't regulate LLCs. We don't regulate the trusts, or the S Corps, or tenant-in-common, or joint tenancy. We don't regulate that. The only thing we can regulate, that is given to us as authority from the state, is how do you use the property? And we can only regulate that with whatever is based in our municipal code. So if it's not in our code, we can't enforce it. We only have to base it whatever is in our code. So looking at, kind of doing a little bit of a code analysis, well, these single-family homes that are being fractionalized, they continue to be single-family uses, right? They're single-family homes. That has not changed. Short-term lodging use, well, it's not allowed in the R1 zones. We allow them in R2 zones. And if anybody was trying to do short-term lodging from a rental purpose, you need to get a permit, and we wouldn't issue the permit. So the last remainder is that timeshare argument, that timeshare usage. So I'm going to go through just a quick analysis, just to show the council, show the audience what I see in our code. And here in front of you is a list of uses that are allowed for your residential zone. You could see kind of that topper part that says RA, R1, RB, RM. RM is your multifamily. RB is your Babo Island. R1 is your single-family, and RA is your single-family. Now, I boxed in in red visitor accommodations, and you could see that we do, we allow two. We allow bed and breakfast and short-term lodging. That's all we allow for visitor accommodations. And both of those have to be in the R2 zone or the RM zone. So I don't see anything there regarding timeshare. So here is the municipal code with regards to definitions. Again, this is visitor accommodation. I know it's very, very fine print, but number one up there says bed and breakfast, and that's the definition of bed and breakfast. There at the bottom in the red box, I've kind of boxed the timeshare project definition, and I'm going to zoom in on that. So now we've zoomed in timeshare project, and here for our definition, this is for Newport Beach. So we have 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, all focusing on timeshare. Timeshare project means a development in which a person receives the right in perpetuity. So that development I highlighted in yellow, that's a very critical word. When I go to item 10, it talks about timeshare project. Item 12 talks about project. Item 13, which is timeshare use, again, it references timeshare project. I go back to number nine, timeshare project means a development. I got to go to the definition of development. Development means the division of a parcel of land into two more lots, the construction, reconstruction, conversion, structural alteration, relocation, or enlargement of a structure. If no one's doing any of that, if no one's doing any construction enlargement, then it can't be considered a timeshare project, and hence, it's not a timeshare. And that's what the struggle is. Does it fit this definition of development, or it doesn't? Is it just an entity buying a single-family home, putting it in LLC, and selling off portions of that home, and not triggering our definition? Well, that's definitely possible. And we see that occur, as I said, on commercial properties and in our multifamily. Does it meet that definition of development or not? Is somebody going to buy a house, remodel it, and then try to fractionalize that? Are we going to define that as development? Well, we could. You know, it's going to be, I think it's a hard sell to make that argument. But when you look at the traditional definition of development, is it that structural alteration, that construction, that relocation or expansion? That's what we're looking for. So when we go back to, when we go back to that kind of analysis, you know, that timeshare usage, if they're not meeting the definition of development, then I can't argue that it's a timeshare project. And that's just meeting our code. And the council can change the code, the council can amend the code, or find different arguments for the code, or make different changes to the code. But from a staff standpoint, looking at the word timeshare project, it doesn't meet the traditional word of development. For Newport Beach, we do have language on what a timeshare should be. Well, it needs to be a minimum of 100 units with, and less than 300 in a kind of a resort hotel, hotel with all the amenities. That's your typical timeshare. Now, granted, these codes were written long ago. This is not modern-day language, right? Like, we know the internet has taken off, we had to change short-term lodging. This was written 20 years ago, 30 years ago. It doesn't address today's issues of fractional ownership of single-family homes. You have the city of St. Helena, they're going to take it on. They're charging forward, and they have very similar definitions, and they're going to litigate it. I don't know what the result is. It's a very slow road. City of Beverly Hills has adopted a moratorium on fractional ownership. I don't know where they're going to end up. Are they going to look at changing the code? We don't know, but they did adopt a moratorium on it. I just want to share with the council, this is where we're at with our definitions. I don't think it triggers the timeshare project definition. It doesn't meet the definition of development. But we can certainly explore it further, update the code, look at different avenues if the council chooses to. And I look for your input. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Simone, could you just please go back to the development page that was highlighted? What you didn't address, conversion. So converting the use from a home that is owned 100% by a single entity, that is being converted for marketing as a different type of domicile?
I don't interpret it that way, Councilmember Dixon. For conversion, I would convert it, excuse me, is how is the conversion tied to- For conversion, I would convert it, excuse me, is how is the conversion tied to the construction of the property? You convert an apartment building to a timeshare, as far as construction-wise. But just from, from looking at a use, I don't, I don't interpret that as, as being, meaning the definition of development, just because you bought the property and now you're fractionally selling off those, those fractions without triggering the, the construction aspect of it. And I look at conversions really more on the, on something physically changing, something physically converting.
Just, okay, just help me understand the lexicon of the construction industry, so when an apartment or a condominium is converted into an apartment, or vice versa? And that does not necessarily involve construction. Is that the correct use of the term? It's converted, there's a conversion?
You're right, you're right. There is that lexicon of a condo conversion, turning the apartment building into a condominium. It's not necessarily a, an actual construction project, but yes, they use the word conversion. It goes through a discretionary map process, so there's actually a discretionary review that's held by the city council for those.
So it's a different use in that example?
It's a different ownership structure, and it is, it is kind of a different, a change. But you're right, it is, it is a conversion.
So those same words you just used, ownership structure and different use, could apply to fractional ownership?
That's why this is not so black and white, Councilmember Dixon. I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that, you know, I'm looking at our definition.
Needs to be analyzed and determined.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think the one thing that, that jumped out the most is that, you know, a lot of ownership in Newport Beach is held in LLCs and trusts. And, you know, there's a portion of residents here that have multiple homes within the city, and some of those might be held in different entities. And if we start getting into the definition of not allowing fractional ownership, well, it frightens me because then all of a sudden, we're in an LLC and trust issue, where that can be litigated in a way that might not be beneficial to a huge amount of our residents that are maybe giving ownership of that Babo Island cottage to their four children, or something where maybe an operating agreement has the benefit of family in mind, as well as the benefit of financial well-being. And the other thing that comes to mind with all of this is that we've been dealing with a lot of problems with short-term rentals anyway in the city of Newport Beach, and now we're dealing with Sacramento with things like SB 9 and 10. And, you know, I don't want to say that this seems to be the lesser of the evils when we start dealing with, do we want to see more short-term rentals popping up in different areas, or is it better to have, you know, four or eight people that call this their vacation home? Because, you know, I have a hard time looking back on Newport at any point and not saying that I have a lot of friends that came here for the summer, you know, they spent their time on Babo Island, maybe it was their summer house then, but the market has changed, the world has changed. The idea of, you know, buying a $4 million summer vacation house has adjusted maybe a lot of our mindset, especially, you know, for some of us that are still trying to make those things happen. And I look at a company like this, and I don't necessarily see the same negative that might be seen, or that we're trying to ruin R1 neighborhoods. I see an idea that maybe those people want to enjoy those neighborhoods for what they are. They don't want to make them a rental facility, or an apartment community, or someone that's coming in every three days or every week. They want to treat it like their forever vacation home, where they come down here and they have their bikes parked in the garage, and they're touring Babo Island, or they're enjoying what it is. And so sometimes I think if we're always against what's already happening, and we're putting our focus on all these different elements, we lose sight of what we're trying to actually do, which is preserve the general nature of how amazing our city is. And in this regard, I, I don't see four or eight owners of a single house really destroying our city. I feel like those people have actually put in $500,000 or a decent amount of money, and it's not ideal, I get it. We would love it if it was a single-family owner for every house, and that's the old way, and blah, blah, blah. But I also think that we have to look towards what the reality of the future may be. And a lot of the people that are trying to create this life for themselves, maybe this is the best way they get to do it. I don't think they're here to destroy our community, I think they're here to enjoy it. And so, you know, besides the, the issues and the deciphering of the code and the politics that go along with it, I think we have a lot of problems because, as I said, a lot of us hold these LLCs and trusts together to maintain our own well-being in cities like this. And if people want to come here to enjoy our city in the right way, well, I mean, those are the people we want. And those are the families that will grow up here forever, and kids will remember, and people that will respect it. And so, I get it, there has to be an argument on all sides, and that's understandable. We don't want it next door to us, I understand. But I have, I have a hard time denying when 56% of the ownership of Newport Beach is in an LLC or a trust, how we can legally justify getting rid of fractional ownership in any way, shape, or form, because it would eventually roll back to all of those kinds of arguments. So I appreciate the staff report, it was very amazing and inclusive, thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I had some questions about the R1 and R2 districts and how this is implemented. So in the R1 districts, yes, they can have fractional ownership, but no, they cannot do short-term rental. And in the R2 district, they could also do fractional ownership, but they could do short-term rentals there? And once an R2 piece of property is converted to a condo, is that still considered a piece of R2 property?
Thank you, Councilmember Brenner. So your first question with regards to the R1 zone, fractional ownership is allowed, but short-term lodging is not, and the answer is yes. And that's per the table above. Again, we just talked about the fractional ownership, does it meet the definition of timeshare, or it doesn't? Or is it just a single-family use? And, you know, per this table, it's looking as more of a single-family use, but short-term lodging is not allowed. In R2, it's short-term lodging is allowed, RM, short-term lodging is allowed. If it doesn't meet the definition of a timeshare project, then timeshare, then the timeshare activity, and I'm not denying that it probably looks like a little bit of a timeshare usage, is there, and that is allowed, correct?
And the third point about once an R2 piece of property is converted to two condos, is that considered still R2 property?
Yes, it is, correct.
So we could have a plethora of applications for short-term lodging in these units that people are buying fractionally?
Well, we do have a cap that Costola did approve, so that cap stays in place, 1,550, which the council will consider November 30th. So as long as that cap's in place, then you can't exceed it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? All right, is there a representative from Picasso here?
All right, thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Ellen Haberly, and I am the Director of Government and Community Relations at Picasso. I am grateful for the opportunity to present to you today and be part of this study session. And I presented, I've prepared a presentation to talk through both Picasso and co-ownership.
Great, how much time do you need?
Probably about four or five minutes.
Thank you.
So I'd like to kick off with a bit of background and context about co-ownership. For generations, family members and friends have been getting together to share ownership of second homes. And property record data suggests that co-ownership is quite common in Newport Beach. As of last year, 31% of all homes in Newport Beach were both non-owner occupied and owned in an LLC or trust, which is a little bit of a different slice of the data that was presented in the previous presentation. But these, these vehicles, these trusts and the LLCs, they are, they easily enable multiple owner arrangements. In reflection of the practice of co-ownership, in fact, the Real Estate Standards Organization, otherwise referred to as RSO, just last month, announced that it will be adding co-ownership as a dedicated property subtype to its data standards. This represents an acknowledgement that co-ownership is a growing practice that should be both tracked and defined. And though co-ownership is a common practice today, owning and sharing a second home is simply a labor-intensive endeavor, endeavor. And Picasso simplifies that process. With Picasso, anywhere between two and eight families together own and fully control 100% of a luxury home, and they employ Picasso as a full-service property manager to reduce that hassle of second homeownership. So let me tell you how it works. Picasso works with local real estate agents to purchase turnkey luxury properties and market them on the multiple listing service. We establish a property-specific LLC, and that LLC holds the title to each home, and we manage those sales details. And after all of those purchasers close on the home, those co-owners together enjoy 100% ownership of the home. And from that point on, Picasso's role is purely as a property manager to provide a seamless experience at the direction of the owners. As property manager, we handle all of those details so that owners can simply enjoy their second home without the hassle. That looks like interior designs and furnishings, ongoing property management, including cleaning and regular maintenance of the home, streamlined bill pay, scheduling tools, and home policy The families that we serve are owners, not vacation renters. These co-owners make a large financial investment in their home, and return to their home throughout the year, just like any other second homeowner. Based on our survey, survey data, most of the families we serve have children in the home and are first-time second-home buyers. And all families pay property taxes, per our requirement, put 30% cash down, and clear a criminal background check as a condition of the sale. And last but not least, we take neighbor relations seriously and have policies in place that reflect that commitment. All owners during the, the purchase process agree to Picasso's Code of Conduct, which includes no rental of the property for any length of time, no large events or parties. We enforce quiet hours between 9:00 and 7:00, no commercial use of the home, and we also encourage owners to leverage their driveway and garages rather than street parking where possible. Each home is supported by a local home manager. We have one dedicated to Newport Beach, who is available to neighbors seven days a week. And if Picasso learns that policies have been violated, we take action, and our, our owner agreement gives us the right to suspend owner-stay rights as an enforcement mechanism. That's, that's the extent of my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. Just a couple of definitional questions. How do you, how does Picasso define luxury home?
In general, the homes that we're looking for are typically about two to four times the local median value. In, in Newport Beach, we currently have either fully sold or are marketing four homes in total that have an average purchase price of about $6 million, just as context.
Explain to me, you say that the share owner pays the property tax, the share property tax. So who has the title to the property?
The LLC.
And is that the eight share owners, or is it Picasso?
Neither. Well, Picasso doesn't hold any interest in the home after it's fully sold. So as a hypothetical example, if the LLC, let's say it's called 1234 Main Street LLC, that LLC holds the title to the home, and each owner of that group is listed as a member of that LLC. Picasso, once those interests are fully sold, do not retain any ownership in the home. Our role is purely as a employed service provider, just as if I hired a landscaper or a property manager to support me in my home.
Is it envisioned that these share owners, like a co-op, would have some kind of management oversight to ensure that there is compliance with
Sure.
Building standards, community standards, that type of thing?
So one of the key services that Picasso provides is essentially a set of agreed-upon rules of the road that, that all owners sign through the operating agreement, and enable Picasso to enforce those policies on behalf of the other owners. So what that means is, you know, with our Code of Conduct, for example, if we were to have an owner violate those policies, then we would be enabled to, to enforce those policies against them. But it also means that we, you know, like, I guess if I could ask your question, you said in terms of sort of building standards and things like that?
Well, or just behavior standards. I mean, we've heard, I mean, I've gotten calls from people in other cities, not necessarily your properties, I don't know who's the fractional owner. Palm Desert or Palm Springs is one call that a person told me about, that the neighbors are, you know, part of the owners, or that one of the families is loud. You know, how, how does that deal with, in terms of exceeding the noise or the time of quiet hours?
So every, every owner group that we serve and engage with, we lean forward on letting them know about what those local ordinances are as it relates to noise. We also lean forward in creating an open line of communication with the neighbors. And so, in the case that there is a, in general, across our portfolio, there has been, there have been very minimal complaints from neighbors, but if it does happen, we investigate. And so what that often means is, is our home manager or someone from our staff reaching out and engaging with those neighbors to understand what's going on, providing that feedback to those owners. And if the issue escalates into a real problem, we are empowered to enforce our policies, most notably by suspending owner-stay rights.
Owner, so let's talk about enforcement, because we could all make laws, but the enforcement is always key. What does that mean, what you just said? You would reduce, or even though they're owners, you would manage or allow, cut back on how many days they're allowed to use the property?
Sure. So our owner, the, the operating agreement that all of the owners sign, give Picasso the ability to suspend owner-stay rights for a period of time, whether that be one month, two months at a time, is per our discretion. But, but we are enabled to do that. I like to consider it kind of like an HOA, where a group of owners are collectively electing to agree to a certain set of rules, and they empower an HOA to enforce those rules. In this case, Picasso is acting as that enforcement body. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Ms. Brenner.
So Picasso has no ownership in these places once they're sold, but you do assume the role of property manager, is that correct?
We are employed by the clients that we serve to serve as property manager for them, yes.
Okay. And I would like to, I don't know that you know this right now, but I'd like to suggest to Simone that some of the regulations that we came up with, with short-term rentals, that there be a collaboration with companies that are doing this in Newport Beach, so that they understand what a Lugo is, and, and that we get some sort of understanding about what action they would take if there is a code enforcement violation, or if there is a police Lugo citation, so that we know what happens in those cases from their point of view. Because we've gone through this a lot with our short-term rentals, and, and with other community members. It's not just short-term rentals, it's when neighbors are not following the good neighbor policies, you know, what happens? And so, we just need to make sure we're on the same page on that, and that we have discussed it and made sure that it's, it's in any kind of documents that we have.
We could definitely reach out to Picasso, absolutely.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So in the LLC formation, is Picasso the managing member?
We, we are the member manager, yes, the, the manager of that LLC.
Okay, you're not the managing member, though, there's a distinction.
I'm sorry, we are the LLC program manager.
Okay, you're not the managing member?
Correct.
Okay. So if a majority of the members of the operating agreement wanted to sever ties with you, they continue that existing LLC formation, replace your management position?
Correct. We are, we operate just like, you know, any other service provider, if the If those owners collectively decide that they are unhappy with the services that we're providing, they can choose to terminate their relationship with us and either self-manage or hire a different property manager.
Essentially, a family trust can do the same thing.
Absolutely.
Now, when you agree to enter this kind of relationship with an LLC, you have rules that you require either they follow, or they're physically placed in the operating agreement?
Correct.
Do you require that they're specifically written in the operating agreement, or you hand them a separate agreement?
Oh, I see.
That's a contract?
We have a, we have the LLC operating agreement, and then separately, we have our Picasso home policies, which outline a lot of the requirements around noise and, you know, rental of the home, et cetera.
I imagine your requirements are, you can't have a rehab here?
A rehab?
Yeah.
Oh, like a rehabilitation facility? Oh.
I imagine you can't have a rehab there.
Sure.
You can't have a hotel there.
No, you cannot.
You can't have a timeshare there.
Correct.
You can't have short-term lodging there.
Absolutely not.
So you are adding, you essentially are a more stringent partner than a family-owned trust or an LLC that's operating its own could have in place.
Exactly.
Okay. And what is the smallest amount of fractional ownership allowed for participants in your program, and what's the average fractional ownership breakdown look like?
Great question. We sell ownership interest in 1/8 increments, but purchasers can buy as much as 50% or half of the home. On average, in the owner groups that we serve, it's very common for at least one, maybe even two owners, to own a quarter interest in the home. And so the average owner group generally looks about six or seven members.
So it could be up to eight?
It can be up to eight.
On average, you're seeing six to seven?
Correct.
And what's your average, well, you're relatively new. I was gonna ask you what your average timeline looks like as far as how long you stay with the specific LLC. You might not have that data.
You mean how long an owner owns that home?
No, no, how long an LLC that exists would use your services?
Oh, well, an LLC, you mean if an owner group sort of decides to move on without us? We've had that happen, where we've had, we are relatively new. I mean, our business is about a year and change old. So we don't have a lot of turnover, but we have had at least one incident where, incidents where an owner group decided that they wanted to self-manage themselves and terminated their agreement with us. So it's maybe too soon to tell in terms of broader averages.
Yeah, it sounds like it is. Great, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have some follow-up questions that occurred to me as I'm listening to my colleagues. So I, my own impression from hearing Picasso's rules of engagement, rules of operations, I commend you. I can't disagree with those rules. But what about the others? Simone, you had indicated there are other companies out there. They may not be as fine as Picasso in terms of how you set up your operations. How can we, as a city, manage this? I mean, you're saying essentially, Simone, that we can't, and I, with 56 or 31%, whatever it is, of this type of homeownership is existing in our city, we can't go into homes and see how they're peacefully coexisting. How, suppose other companies do come into Newport Beach, what do we do? I mean, we, I remember also well when short-term rentals, I don't mean to put you on the same plane, but these are new phenomena that have occurred because of the internet and that type of thing in the last five to seven, 10 years. And when we first talked about short-term rentals, we decided just to take a low-key approach. We, let's just see what happens. We don't like, we, in the city, do not like laws. Let's see how people behave. Well, we learned after about five or six years, after a thousand or more permits were granted, that it's gotten to be a point where we need to manage this a little better as a city. So if we have no constraint on this, and it's Katy bar the door, Wild West again, how do we, how do you see others, how do you work with other cities? So as long as you're standing there, you can help us understand how do we protect our neighborhoods and our community, and the tranquility in our community such as it may exist?
I think that's a great question. What I'm familiar with, working with cities across the country, is that unfortunately, neighbor conflict is a reality in every community across the nation, and conflict between owners. So if you take sort of the short-term rental experience aside, there are many ordinances in place in every city across the country that work to ensure the peace and quiet and safety and comfort of the residents who live there. And so that often looks like ordinances that touch on noise, disruption, things like that. And so my understanding is that Newport Beach has a robust set of ordinances that apply to every homeowner in Newport Beach, whether that be a primary homeowner or a second homeowner. And we see the owners that Picasso serves as certainly subject to those ordinances, just like any other second home or a full-time owner would be. From our point of view, you know, because of our own commitment to ensuring that we're having positive neighbor relations, we add another layer on top of those, of those local ordinances as an additional sort of setting of expectations of how we want to be engaging in communities and how we, and reflecting our commitment to the community. And so I would say that we have an opportunity to maintain an open line of communication so that we can be in touch in case there are any issues that do arise, that allows us to address them. But every homeowner in this city is subject to a wide range of ordinances today that could potentially be improved upon or tweaked if there was broader need for that.
Ms. Brenner.
I felt better when I thought you were an ongoing partner with these, because it sounds like you're trying to be a responsible company. But now that you've said that they can fire you and hire someone else, or they can not have a management company at all, I think it's, we need to look at our ordinances. And perhaps you can give us some advice on which other cities to look at that have incorporated some kind of regulations that prevent problems in the future. Because like Diane said, you know, we didn't know there were problems with short-term rentals until they became very prolific. So I would ask Simone to see if maybe you can give us some clues and come back to us with what we can do to make sure that this is not going to create. I'm already getting complaints from some people about that it is, that they're behaving like short-term rentals, and that there's a lot of coming and going, and there's a lot of noise. And so I think we need to be proactive about this, and certainly look at every protection that we can offer to our residents in the future.
We'd, Picasso would certainly be happy to collaborate with your staff, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
I wanted to wait until after public comment, but I'll at least, when folks come up and speak to this. I'm trying to think if we wanted to regulate this, how we could. And so that's, I'm, that's one of the things I'm even trying to think through, because there are a significant, there are a significant number of homes owned in LLC in interest. Some of them are just gonna be single families because they're doing it for tax reasons or liability reasons. A lot of them are gonna be because there are fractional interests, there are people who own them. Oftentimes, it's kids, it's families, it's friends who have purchased. So this is a little, it's different, because this is, it's a commercial enterprise, looking for, it's just, it is, it feels different. The problem is, when we're trying to go through on the legal side of things, you know, how to handle that. So that's one of the things I'm even trying to kind of work through in my head. But the, because, you know, there are a lot of people who own, especially up in Newport Coast, second and third homes that are handled by property management companies, too. And so that's, that's one of the things that I'm trying to work through in my head. I suppose one of the things that would make it different is if, for some reason, a company allowed for a fractional interest that was more than 12, then you're now getting into a guaranteed situation where they are, they're going to make sure that people are getting less than a month, less than 30 days. And at that point, there is a concern that they have set up a situation where, you know, it's less than 30-day occupancy. I still can, I still have struggle with the idea of the ownership side of things and requiring that, because clearly, we can't require them to have a primary, only have a primary residence if they've got an LLC. I know I'm rambling a bit here, folks, but this is not an easy solution. It's not an easy issue. And I think that you heard them say that. But I'm trying to, I'm kind of struggling through this, so I wanted to at least kind of give you a heads up where I'm struggling through this while you're kind of working through at the public comment level. But, you know, that issue of if they're, and I know Picasso doesn't have this, and I probably recognize why you cap the number of owners, the ownership shares at half, so that no single person has the operating agreement's majority, which is smart. But I'm trying, that's what I'm kind of working through, what I'm trying to work through on the, you know, the difference between this and short-term lodging. Short-term lodging, you can guarantee is gonna be less than 30 days. And I suppose if you had 13 owners and a fractional commercial enterprise, then you're guaranteeing it's less than 30 days. We just don't have that with Picasso, so maybe we look at that with some of the other groups to see if that's, that's an issue for them. Because, you know, and I do, because part of what I'm trying to do also is, I'm trying to go to the extreme. Like, what happens if you have a fractional ownership group where you now have 100 owners? That's, that seems like a problem. And so, and that, and you could see that happening. I don't, I don't know why you wouldn't, you couldn't see that happening. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of trying to work through here. Go ahead, if you, if you had a thought there, Simone.
So there is a provision with the Department of Real Estate, once they hit 11, they have to have filings and public records, and, you know, there's a cost estimate. It's almost like an HOA, as the speaker said. But with Department of Real Estate, I think it's 11 is the threshold when they have to file with the Department of Real Estate. So that's just one, one kind of threshold that I'm aware of.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a good question for other companies. I mean, if Picasso exists at eight, they're not gonna be in that situation, but others might. So I'm not, I just don't understand, I don't know what the, I don't know where our threshold might be, but I do worry about the idea of creating a commercial fractionalized enterprise where you have more than 12, and you're guaranteeing now that the ownership group, who, no matter what, someone's gonna have less than 30 days residence. And that seems like we've entered into, you know, that seems like we've entered into a short-term lodging situation, for sure. Anyway, I'm trying to work that through, but I wanted to at least give folks a heads up. That's what I'm struggling through as I'm listening to this.
So the owners set their own calendar?
Yeah, so one of the services that Picasso provides is a scheduling tool for owners to share their calendar. That's governed by a set of rules and algorithms to ensure equitable length of time and equitable stay in the home. And so, for example, we want to make sure that if one family had 4th of July, that they're not also going to get Thanksgiving and Christmas. And so there are rules in place to ensure that that's fair.
And so they could just set up, oh, we've got a free weekend, let's use the house, and the schedule's open, and we'll go down there?
Yeah, so the way that it works is that, you know, well, the homes that we serve actually have really high occupancy. The owners really want to use their home. And so on average, these homes are occupied 90 to 95% of the time, because these owners are, they understand which special, you know, dates and moments they have where they want to spend time in their home, and they reserve that time in advance, up to two years in advance. And so the calendar for a particular home is usually quite full. But if there was a free weekend, and that certainly happens, and I'm an owner, and I say, oh, looks like the house is open this weekend, let's go spend time, they can certainly book last-minute stays within, you know, two days' advance notice if there is availability.
And then could they send their kids down? So we're not gonna go down, but you kids go ahead and use it?
Absolutely. Just like any other second homeowner, the owners that own the home can invite their family members or friends to stay in the home, even if they're not there. However, we strictly prohibit the rental of the property, and so no exchange of money could happen. And so
They could send guests, as long as they weren't paying?
Absolutely. So you could have your sister or cousin come and stay in that home instead of you. And, but all of those guests would be subject to Picasso's policies as well.
Sure. So the real difference to me with this is the number of cycles that are going on here compared to a normal home. Now, granted, there's some homes, obviously, that have very active families, and there's plenty of cycles. And, you know, in a neighborhood, we know who they are, you know, they're very vibrant and going around. But here, like, as you said, the schedule's packed. And, you know, when we go through neighborhoods all around town, so often, there's nobody on the porch. You know, there's nobody home, or it doesn't seem like it. And it, and then you've got some homes that are pretty active, and it leads to, you know, a mix. But to your point, in this kind of investment, you want to make sure you utilize it, whether you can use it yourself, or share it with your kids, or give it to guests. But it's going to be occupied 90% of the time, right?
Correct. And from Picasso's point of view, we see that as a great benefit for the housing market and for the local economy. Today, unfortunately, the typical second home sits empty 10 to 11 months out of the year, because it, you know, by its nature, a second home. Or if it's not sitting empty, then oftentimes, it's rented out to short-term renters. And so we are providing really a different option. Instead of a home that has, that's either empty or has a revolving door of strangers, these homes are occupied by a small group of invested owners who are making a long-term commitment to that community and return to that home time and time again throughout the year. We see that as great for the housing market, because it's essentially rerouting people who may have purchased a second home at a lower price range and consolidated them into a single upper-tier home. And it also means that the local restaurants and businesses and, and the broader economy benefits from owners who are spending their money in the community throughout the year.
Right. But it may impact neighbors that have enjoyed a home, perhaps it was owned by an older couple, or, you know, a couple that was, did a lot of traveling, gone for long periods of time, and someone they got to know over time, as opposed to, you know, in this model, you know, really, if you're gonna be the neighbor of a home that's owned by, that's operated by Picasso, you're gonna make, you know, eight, you're gonna meet and get to know eight new neighbors, basically, right?
We see that as a benefit, but yes.
Right. Great. Well, thank you. Any more comments from council? We'll open it up to public comment. Appreciate it. So if you could, how many people wish to speak on this item, please? Raise your hand. Okay. First speaker, please. Collectively, you will.
Good evening, not afternoon anymore, Nancy Scarborough. A couple of things to wrap your head around that just occurred to me. If there are eight owners who are taking turns at this, it doesn't mean that they're going to be one owner for six weeks, and then another owner for six weeks. So you could have another family in and out of there every single week, depending on how that gets sorted out. And the management company probably controls that, but another management or a self-managed property might have different restrictions. Second thought is, how does this affect our property tax? When does that property tax transfer over? So if an LLC owns the property, and there are eight partners in that LLC, one partner could sell their portion, their share, and the LLC would not change, the taxes for the LLC would not change. So as that house appreciates, we will be losing tax income that we would otherwise have if that house were to turn over on a regular market. That's how I see it. But maybe there's some legal, you know, I don't know how that will work, but that's just something to consider. And I think we need to, I think we need to get out in front of this and have some thoughts about it.
Like, the county always gets its taxes somehow.
Maybe.
Next speaker, please. Please move up to the front if you're going to speak, and we'll get through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Russell Dahl, and I'm actually the next-door neighbor to the property that we're talking about that was recently purchased by Picasso. First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this, and I also appreciate the questions that were asked. But I think there's a couple of things that I would like to point out, my understanding. So as the representative from Picasso stated, they're a new company. They've been around for 12 months. It's difficult for me to comprehend when you say, our members act a certain way. It's difficult for me to comprehend when you say our members act a certain way when their model is very immature. They haven't sold a lot of these properties. You don't know what people are going to do. You don't know what happens when there are multiple LLCs that own properties that are no longer managed under these arrangements. The members can change the way they manage themselves. They can change the way they govern themselves. This property, as I understand it, there is an app. You go on, you book no more than two weeks at a time. So these are short-term stays. It starts to behave like a mini hotel. People check in, people check out. You have a lot of turn at eight people. It's not only eight people, it's the extension of their friends and family that then occupy these properties. If you go out and look at this model, there is very little positive out there in the public domain about the Picasso model. There's litigation in St. Helena. There is a huge grassroots and community effort to stop Picasso. There's a group called Stop Picasso Now that is trying to educate many communities from Malibu to Napa to Newport Beach to stop this form of ownership. It's not, you know, a sustainable model in my view. If you look at fractional ownership, people get involved in these properties. You get involved with eight people you may or may not know. You then have to govern that property. You have to live there. We don't know the long-term ramifications of this as homeowners and communities. I do know if you go out, many, many communities are saying, we don't think this is the proper homeownership format for our communities. And I just don't think there's enough data or enough history to dispel that, frankly. So I'm encouraged that we're looking at this as a city. I do think that this circumvents our short-term occupancy and rental rules. And I, you know, we have sought legal counsel to understand what those rules are and to make sure that they're complied with. As an immediate neighbor and my community members who are my neighbors, we're concerned at what the long-term ramifications are of this form of ownership. And remember, this model is as they depict it today. Again, it's a one-year-old company. That can evolve over time. We can make it a lot longer. We can make it, you know, a much, a number of more members buying each property. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name's Susan Stoneburner. We stand before you today as one community from Emerald Avenue on Balboa Island that has been severely impacted by the purchase of a Picasso fractional ownership home in our neighborhood. It is our belief that per the regulations for short-term housing in Newport Beach, 121 Emerald is a short-term rental, not a fractional ownership as it claims to be. The owners are allowed to stay from two to 10 days at a time. Two to 10 days. In the time that Picasso has owned 121 Emerald, we have experienced loud parties. Let's face it, it's a party house. Up to six vehicles and 16 guests, underage drivers operating golf carts, excessive drinking and noise, exterior floodlights left on all night long disturbing the quiet of the neighborhood. And one time, there was an owner who lost control, he was drunk, of the golf cart that they provided as an amenity. He careened over the curb and into another home on Emerald. Has anything happened? The fence isn't even fixed. And this happens every two to 10 days. We get new people. And they were right. It could be a family member who doesn't know the rules. It could be a friend who doesn't know the rules. It could be given away at a charity auction for all we know. But it's not just eight people occupying this house. It is multitudes of people for each of these eight units that they own. In a meeting, Picasso told us that the only the eight owners would be using the home, but that's not true, like I just said. Friends and family are also using the home without the owners present, or they have a lot more than eight families owning the properties. We have a very tight community and this home is definitely not part of it. The use of the home qualifies as a short-term rental, and as such, it does not have a short-term rental agreement with the city. It's not paying the appropriate city taxes, does not have a business license with the city of Newport Beach. Furthermore, there is a professional management company that's supposed to handle the comings and goings of the owners, which also appears to be unlicensed with the city. In our several conversations with Picasso and its management, they have promised much and delivered nothing. We realize there is little that can be done regarding 121 Emerald. At this time, we are asking for the city to qualify fractional ownership homes as short-term rentals so that we as homeowners have the opportunity to utilize the city services that relate to that classification. Any help that you can provide would be greatly appreciated, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Next speaker, please. No clapping. Folks, thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kathy Brown. I live at 171706 Miramar. My garage is exactly 20 feet from that house's garage. It's, my husband and Jack and I have owned our home since 1999, approximately 23 years. We've been a full-time resident for the past eight. From 1999 to 2013, we used our home as a true definition of a second home. We consider ourselves blessed to be able to live on Peninsula Point. I'm the first person to discover that Picasso was an escrow to purchase 1703 Plaza del Norte. Dave, the owner builder, walked over to me while I was working in my garden and told me he had sold it to a corporation, gave me a few details. I immediately did my research to find out exactly what this Picasso was all about, discussed with Stop Picasso Now, which what they have done with their community in St. Helena, they try to make it the ugliest neighborhood possible so that anybody coming to look at the home would be detoured and not want to invest in that property. I personally don't want to do that to our neighborhood. I immediately contacted all neighbors and we put up banners, we put up the yard signs a few, just trying to get everybody aware. During this time, I also contacted Yolanda Summerhill, our Assistant City Attorney, asking what options we have to stop or at least slow the escrow while we did our research to find out. Also contacted a Realtor on record for representing Picasso on the purchase, and it's a local agent. He was in Laguna Beach. I'll leave him nameless for now. When speaking with the Realtor by phone, I asked why he would represent Picasso in our neighborhood because it is a timeshare-style living, and not only are we not zoned for this, but if he sells the property in our neighborhood, it would really damage his reputation as a Realtor. He immediately responded, I have nothing to do with the sale or purchase with Picasso on this property, which I have, I believe is untrue. Myself and other neighbors tried frantically to find out as much information as possible to stop the escrow or at the very least slow the process so we could make Picasso and any future investors aware of the codes and conduct in our Zone R1 area. Also, it would have been wonder if we had the time to advise them, purchase property in the Zone 2 area, short-term rental. They would be welcome. If I lived in that neighborhood where they had weekly rentals come every single time, I would be thrilled to have only eight owners come in. Great. Take it. Buy there. Don't buy in our area. We're not zoned to have different families come in every single week or days. So now the damage is done. Picasso owns the house behind me.
Okay, that's, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. No clapping, please. Please, thank you.
Mayor Avery and City Council members. My name's Mike O'Neill, and I'm a retired business CEO. And my wife and I are one of the fractional owners of a property at 2628 Ocean Boulevard in Corona del Mar, which happens to be a Picasso home. It's a beautiful home. We first heard about Picasso in July of this year. And having been a business executive for many, many years, I did a fair amount of due diligence into Picasso, into the contracts, the formation of the LLC, the operating agreements, the house rules, et cetera. Once I became comfortable with that level of due diligence, then they wanted to do some on our, on our behalf. So we had to send them certified financial statements. We had to send them bank references, and we also had to pass a criminal background check. Luckily, we passed all those, and now we're the proud owners of 2628 Ocean Boulevard along with seven other families. And I have a son, Ryan, who lives in the Orange County area. He's been here for 25 years. He's married. His wife's a teacher. They've got two grandkids, five and three, and the third one on the way. And we love to come to Orange County and Newport Beach in particular. We've been coming here for 40 years. And so when this opportunity presented itself, I took advantage of it. There's a significant financial investment involved. In this case, we invested $1,263,000 for our 1/8 interest. If you multiply that times eight, that's $10,100,000. So the eight people putting up the money or the equity ownership have put up or will be putting up that amount. So there's a significant amount of financial investment in that property. So the last thing I want to do is have a short-term rental type arrangement. And I was happy to see that the agreements that we signed did not allow any kind of short-term rental Airbnb, BRBO-type arrangement. Because we really want to protect the value of that home. And basically, my, my hope is, as an owner, I'm going to pass it on down to my, my son, Ryan here, and my, and his two brothers, for them to use. But that's the reason we ended up here. We love Newport Beach. We're paying taxes. I can guarantee you, we're paying our property taxes. Our property taxes on that house are $98,000 a year. We're paying 1/8 of that. And then we, we hired Picasso to do the management, and they're hiring local contractors, vendors, and service providers to provide those services. And it's really a turnkey deal. You get there, everything's perfect. You live for 10 days or two weeks or whatever. You leave and you don't come back. You don't have to worry about it. They take care of all the maintenance. They care of all the landscaping. It's impeccably kept inside and outside, and we couldn't be happier. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but that's from our, our perspective. It's been a wonderful thing.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Richard Mangan. I'm one of the fractional owners of 121 Emerald. Hope my family or I haven't been the cause for any of the problems that the audience or the neighbors said. We bought this because we love vacations, loved them all our life. Usually, we rent VRBOs. This is something different for us to own something. And we view this as our forever vacation house. It's a dream to us to be able to have a house on Balboa Island. I mean, I couldn't afford, we paid times eight, forget that. But to be able to live here and hopefully peacefully coexist with the neighbors is our goal. We, we long to be good neighbors. We're only going to be there 1/8 of the time. I can't control the other 7 eighths. But when we're there, we try to smile, we try to go to bed early, 9 o'clock. I like it. It's a quiet island, not a party island like other parts of Newport Beach. The only dissension we want is the dissension we have when arguing where we're going to go to dinner. If I win, it's a Royal Hand. I love that place. And the opportunity to be able to walk across the island to a really nice dinner and walk back is something that we treasure. My kids and grandkids have already come to love it. You know, we don't know if we're going to buy a Duffy or whatever. My brother brings his big yacht and sits, I know. We should, I guess. Then you have to keep it, you know? We could just rent it. All right. Is he trying to say? Ah, very good. When, when we were kids, my family owned a cabin, and all the uncles got together and we fractional owned it, but they had their own deal. And it was really nice, what great memories growing up with a vacation house. But there was always Uncle Earl. Uncle Earl always got the best deal. And I, you know, I was just a kid, but I heard my mom and dad complaining about Uncle Earl and trying to swindle us one way or the other. And when they sold it, somehow Uncle Earl got more. I, I think Picasso's got so many things right. Like the other fellow, I looked into him a lot before I, mine was like 750 grand for 1/8. And I looked at it, and everything that they've done, I see them addressing this opportunity intelligently. The app is fantastic. You know, you, you do your little schedule. My wife tries to figure out, and we debate when we're going to be down here. So it's an experience. Fractional ownership, vacation home, Balboa Island. You can get together with some friends and try to do it, or you can do it this way. It's nice to be able to share the little part of heaven that you guys call home. So that's it.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Avery, council members, city staff. My name is Mike De Sanctis. I live at 120 Emerald Avenue, directly across the street from the Picasso house. Mr. Bloom talked about people being allowed to move down here and enjoying this great environment, and we're all in favor of that. However, it's not quite like that down there. And Ellen from Picasso spoke about how the environment is supposed to be, and that's wonderful, but it's not like that. We have multiple people coming and going every couple of days. We have people in golf carts, as Ms. Stoneburner talked about, underage children driving golf carts and driving up and down the street, making noise, beeping the horn, and just not respecting the neighborhood. This gentleman that just got up here sounds like a wonderful man, and I'm sure most of those families are wonderful families. However, when we met with the acquisition manager of Picasso, he told us they did research and they felt that the best place for this Picasso house was on Balboa Island on Emerald Avenue. Emerald Avenue is the smallest end of the island. So when there's six cars that come in with the group, it impacts our neighborhood, not to mention all the, the undergrounding we're doing, things like that. So they don't maintain their property. We never see them blowing the side of the yard and stuff and cleaning the yard and any of that stuff. I know they have a gardener that comes in, trims and stuff, but it's not very well-maintained. The noise level from the top deck is very loud. There's language that goes on. There's cannabis use that goes on that floats out through the neighborhood, and just a total disrespect. Not by all of them, but there's a number of people that own that property that don't respect our neighborhood. So if that's a plan for Picasso to do what Ellen has said, that's wonderful, to maintain it, to watch the people, because we don't want to. We don't want to have to babysit a bunch of people charging around in golf carts. When the man drove through the fence, I witnessed it, and I went over to see if he was okay. And he was. But if there was somebody in that yard, and there normally is, children, it could have been very, very bad. He left, did some work, stuck it upside down, the fence. Now, the next family that comes in, they take the golf cart. It's not supposed to be used to jump curbs, and they have their family in it, and then they drive down the street. What happens when a wheel falls off that golf cart? And that can happen. You know, when you jump a curb, it hurts that machine. So, you know, it's just not a good mix for us. And I would ask, would you like to have a hotel across the street from you? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Connie Adnoff. I deal with short-term rentals and lodging within Newport. And I, I think the city has legal reach for the management of our industry, and it's done an extremely good job with that, putting together the accountability for the, for that industry and for the people that come to town. If they, as it stands, if they don't behave properly, is what we're hearing is happening here, they can be immediately evicted. Long-term renters, you can't. Owners, property owners, you can't. And so my question is, what kind of legal reach can the city even have? This isn't an issue about Picasso or about any of the other companies, or for owners who are self-managing, but what kind of legal reach can the city even have towards a property owner? That's my concern, and that would be the, the area to dig further because this has nothing to do or... to do or isn't even in the same category of short-term lodging, which is what it's sounding like that capability is. Just, but these are owners doing this, and then what? So I don't know.
Thank you for your comment.
But please go down that avenue, okay?
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Fancher. I live in Jasmine Creek. We are an HOA. It seems the core of the discussion tonight is about how this city might deal with bad actors that might come into this city in what are, in ownership positions in property, yet act as if they are short-term users of property, which needs, which is a different topic. I'm troubled that we would attempt to legislate the actions of people and attempt to do that through our governmental authority. I would, and I think we could get into the history of past of governments trying to deal with that in the past and how that has played out. I think the interest that you can, that needs to be served by this, by the city, is to focus on the nuisance side of law, which is a power that is correctly vested with the city, and deal with, we can't legislate behavior, and we shouldn't be trying to predict behavior, and we shouldn't be trying to guess who can live, exercise a right, a legal right to live in a residence, own it and live in it, if it's even for a short period of time. I don't think that's the city's business. And I think that we should focus on the nuisance side of it, which is where we can regulate bad behavior. We shouldn't be in the business of trying to regulate good behavior. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Tanner. I'd like to talk about fractional homeownership and ask that the city explore the possibility of using that concept to help with affordable housing. It would not be applicable at all for short-term housing, but it might be something that could be used to put a low-income family in a nice house. And there may be tax ramifications. So I would ask that the city staff be instructed to explore with HCD if a fractional ownership, where perhaps a family wants to get their son or daughter or their family that would qualify as affordable housing into a house through this vehicle, and if we could get affordable housing credit for that in meeting our housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none. Bring it back up here. Any further comments from council? Mr. Blom.
Real quick, I just, I want to go over some of the best points that were made and the biggest irritations that we have. I just want to notch them off so that we can all understand that we've had bad neighbors, gardening issues, cannabis issues, language, respect, problems. All of those are real. But anyone that buys a house and has those same problems as your neighbor, those are all the same problems we have. We have to address them. We have to be good neighbors with them. There was a lot of great speakers out here tonight. I just get nervous that all of a sudden, up here, we start legislating more regulation for what it is we can and cannot do, especially when it comes to the way that we can buy property. You know, we have a second home, and this is unrelated, it's not fractional, so, Aaron, I'm good. But people come down and stay at it. They enjoy it. My nephew was down here for his 21st birthday to wander around the peninsula, and maybe he was too loud. You know, maybe there were some issues there. And I would hope that my neighbors would pick up a phone and call me and tell me, hey, whoever stayed at your house that night was too loud, he needed to quiet down, and we were up too late, there was a problem. And I think that's where we're getting farther and farther away from, and where I don't want to be farther away from, is that as Newport, we're still together. The people that want to come and spend time and stay here, they're not our enemies. We're not trying to get rid of them. We want them here. If they want their kids and grandkids to explore the same thing that we got to as we grew up here, well, then we should allow that. The hard thing is, is that we can't change behavior from a dais. It's not possible. And if we over-regulate the world, then everything is just a bad regulation. You're right. I don't like this idea that we turn every house into a frat house. I don't. That's not the idea of what this city is. But sometimes, and someone said it's not our job to police, but sometimes it is our job as good neighbors to go knock on that door and say, hey, you guys are being bad neighbors. Can you be a better neighbor? And I get it. Sometimes it doesn't work. We have an amazing enforcement department in this city. Our police are second to none. They will show up, and they will stop the noise and the problems. And those issues will be reported, and they'll start building a case on the other side if that is really the issue we're having. But it's really hard to sit up here and say that we're going to stop something through a legislative process that inhibits what 56% of this city already utilizes for how we own our houses. And I think that you're right, it's tough. I don't want a frat house next to me either. And I empathize amazingly with you on this. But I also have to ask, what happens when we start putting more and more laws into the book, more and more code to regulate how we purchase, how we hold? What happens to our tax incentives? Because some of us like those. And so it's not that I'm for or against either one of these. I'm just against more legislation to ruin what's already happening in the city. And if fractional ownership means we're spending $600,000 or $400,000 to be a part of Newport Beach, well, I don't care who you are, that's a good investment into the city. And you might not want that two-week person next to us. I get it. But maybe, just maybe, they might become that friend you didn't think you would have. That summer rental that came in with their kids, those grandkids that stopped by. You know, I get it, we like the way we are. But everything is coming down from us, or coming down upon us from every single direction. And right now, to sit and try to fight this while we're fighting to build everything else, fighting the states, fighting the federal government, these aren't the problem people. These aren't the issues. I get it, eight people that want to buy one house in Newport Beach, it's still $4 million. It's still a lot of money. Maybe just talk to them. Maybe we knock on the door a few more times. I know you guys don't like that. It's not always about what we enjoy, but sometimes it is about the conversation. I think more times than not, we've lost the ability to converse across the doorstep or across the table, and we found the ability to converse over a dais more important. You know, maybe neighborhood is more important, and maybe we need to build that a little more. I have no answers either, but this is not the biggest problem I think I see in Newport right now. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Well, thank you. In my opinion, we can't eliminate fractional ownership. We have a lot of existing predating this tech platform, entities that are set up this way, often for inheritance reasons. We do have a little bit of a problem, though. Well, first to answer the question for staff, I don't think that this violates our timeshare ordinance. I think for good reason, because it's a creative way to argue it's a timeshare, but we all pictured something very different. We think of a timeshare. I'm not saying that these issues don't exist with a current operation as such, but I don't think that it's what they had in mind when they said this is a timeshare. So I agree with your interpretation, Simone. So, Mr. Harp, I'll switch to you. How do we limit ownership if it starts going above eight? Because obviously, I view the operators here as a good operator, but if other operators were to show up, and even the case of a good operator, you know, how do we deal with a problem home? Like the one that's expressed on Balboa Island?
Well, I think there are, I think that Picasso touched on this, that there are a lot of general laws that are applicable to people, how they conduct themselves. The municipal code is filled with things that constitute a public nuisance. It regulates noise, regulates, you know, how people deal with their trash, and all the kind of nuisance type of crimes that you see. So I think that that's one way that these, the situation would be regulated, be just regulated, just like we regulate every other property in the city of Newport Beach. I do think that if you're going to take a look at, you know, how many people can own a piece of property together, if my understanding is correct, I believe that the state does start to regulate when you get to 12. And I think, Simone mentioned that, maybe you could elaborate on, you know, kind of how the state addresses when you get to a certain size of fractional ownership.
So for the timeshare laws, you have to do a filing with the Department of Real Estate once you hit 11 owners. You're filing, you're filing the paperwork with regards to, like any HOA, which is, you know, the expenses, the costs, right?
Can I pick you one second?
I'm sorry.
I just want to, I want you to continue, but I want to get one question out about that. So with that in mind, if there are more than 11 under state law, they are basically a timeshare, and then de facto, they're violating our ordinance?
So with regards to our ordinance, I don't think, there's, I think there's two different ways to interpret it. I think you have Department of Real Estate law, which they say just anything above, when you hit 11, you got to do a filing. I think with our regulation, I don't think, just by the definition of development, I don't think it ever hits that definition.
Okay. So we would need something still that said 11-plus still does not clarify ours to be a timeshare.
Correct.
So we would need something extra to make that clarification.
Correct.
Okay. So I want you to continue, I just wanted to get that out there.
So when you, thank you, Councilmember Muldoon. So when you hit 11, you have to file with the Department of Real Estate, you have to show the cost, the expenses, and it's all about protecting those property owners, right? So it's full disclosure, you have to do a filing. It's the same thing when you do a condominium project, you file the pink paper and the white paper, you got to protect the property owners with these filings, and that's what the Department of Real Estate laws are. So it is when you hit 11.
So could you put that timeshare slide up again, where you outline? If you know what slide it is, Simone? I think that it might reference the number that is a threshold for a timeshare.
Can you help her?
Sorry, it's...
Yes, you got it.
Does one, doesn't one, didn't one of these say a number? Yeah, one of them said a number on it.
We have C, which is shares of property or sold 1/8 ownership. The other presentation, Councilmember Muldoon, was the housing element, which we had a ton of numbers.
Yeah, I think it was related to this. Yeah. Well...
I'll cycle through them one more time.
If we needed an amendment so that there was a, there was a number that did define a timeshare, in my opinion, above what a traditional family could own, I mean, you could be a Kennedy, there could be 100 heirs in the Kennedy family, but for your typical family, you only have so many heirs that are fractional ownership in a home. So we could define the timeshare to put a cap essentially on a dozen or so. But I'm still to some of the impression that our, our timeshare development definition does not fit this particular operator.
Correct.
And thank you for answering the question, Simone, but I wanted to bring it back now to Aaron one more time.
Yes.
Okay, so Aaron, I understand that someone could call and make complaints, but we know a lot of times the peace officers are busy, they're slow to show up, can be really tough. Is there a method in which complaints could be filed, and we could request a response from the operator, where essentially, you know, the operator understands that they, you know, they are allowed to operate in the city, but if there's an enormous amount of complaints, like in the situation of this house on Emerald, that there are things the city can do? Is there a way to put something like that in place so that there are rules that don't only apply internally among the fractional owners, but they apply to the outside organization, in this case being the city?
Yeah, I think that we have some experience with something similar in the short-term lodging context, where we have, you know, a hotline where people can call in and lodge complaints. I'm sure we could expand that so that those complaints are forwarded over to the owner of Picasso, so that there's one kind of central place for people to make complaints. I know that Simone's team runs that, runs that piece of the puzzle, so I don't know if he has any thoughts about, you know, kind of having a central collection point for forwarding those type of issues on to Picasso.
So we do have a hotline through short-term lodging. What's important to understand for short-term lodging is that those units are registered with the city, so we have names, contact information. So we can implement that similar to the fractional ownership, but we need them to be registered with the city. And that, and we do that with short-term lodging through a permit program, which the council has adopted. So if you want to adopt some type of...
I think it'd be more of a voluntary, you know, Picasso would rather, if it was a voluntary.
Yeah, something I would appreciate. But just for the sake of this evening, I don't believe I agree with you, Simone does not fall under the definition of timeshare. And I think we'd have a huge issue that would be knocked out by the courts, but a huge property rights and ownership issue if we were to look at disrupting the 30 to 56%, whatever number you take, fractional ownership arrangements within the city limits. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
I just want to clarify with Picasso, if one of you could come back up if you wouldn't mind. Ellen? Is that your name? Yes. I'm confused on, we've heard references to people coming in and out of the fractional ownership every two weeks, so, but I know you prohibit short-term rentals. So what kind of rules do you have for your owners? How do they manage? So they are coming, they're behaving like short-term rentals, and perhaps unfortunately, some of their family members are behaving like short-term renters. So how, help us try to figure out how we can keep peace.
So one thing to clarify when it comes to the time that owners spend in the home is that our policies allow owners to spend up to 14 days per 1/8 interest. If you are a quarter owner of a home, you can extend that to 28 days.
Okay, let me just stop, and you could continue to, pardon my interruption, but our definition of short-term rental is one to 30 days. And so over 31 days is a long, is a long-term lease. So your rules are really the same thing as short-term rentals?
I think, Diane, I think, Councilmember Dixon, I think the biggest difference here is that it's, they have to have an ownership interest, so you're only getting the owners in there, they're not renting it in any way.
True.
So you don't, you're not getting that rental component.
True.
I agree with that. These are owners, not renters. And so the, our policies actually reflect consumer research on how second homeowners use their homes. In general, you know, second homeowners kind of have, they pop in and pop out at different points. On average, second homeowners, you know, use their home four to six weeks out of the year combined. And, and the owners that we serve in particular oftentimes have children in the home and are subject to school schedules back in their primary residence. And so coming in for spring break or, you know, holidays related to their school is what makes the most sense for their families, and so our structure reflects that.
All right, so I get that. So I guess initially, I was relieved that these were not going to be short-term rentals, but there will be cases where the occupancy could be looked, short-term rentals under a different name. But let me just ask specifically about the property on Emerald. Was there a report given to your property manager about some of these problems that the neighbors are reporting?
We learned about a week ago that, via an owner, that a neighbor had a concern about the home. And we took, as is per our policy, we took an action immediately to learn more and investigate about that issue. We, key to that was reaching out to the neighbor directly who witnessed the concern related to a golf cart, to hear from his perspective what happened. That investigation is underway right now, and if we determine that that owner... That investigation is underway right now, and if we determine that that owner violated our policies, we absolutely will be taking action.
How long does an investigation take?
We expect to be making a decision sometime this week, and so generally a short period of time.
And just one final question. We talked about voluntary, I'm not into making new rules, regulations. Would a company like Picasso be interested in voluntarily providing the city with information about, and so we can address some of these complaints if they came into code enforcement or to the police? Ownership, I mean, or some number to contact? I guess that would be, how would we know otherwise? We don't even know where they are. So volunteer, Picasso would say, we have these properties in Newport Beach, if there's any problem that comes in to the police or code enforcement, please let us know.
We certainly can discuss that. It's important to us to have an open line of communication with the, in the communities where we operate. One of the things that we lean forward on is providing contact information to the neighbors so that if there were, were concerns, they could reach out to us directly. Unfortunately, with that home, we seem to have lost that connective tissue, and we have a, a home manager that is working to make sure that those neighbors have our contact information so that they can reach out to the right point of contact if they have concerns. Additionally, if, you know, and this goes for, for any, you know, any homeowner in Newport Beach, but if a neighbor was concerned, I think there are a couple of different options they could take as, as Councilmember Blum mentioned, knocking on the door and having a conversation with a neighbor, we think would be really powerful. Or alerting the police if, if they think that what they're doing is in violation of local ordinances, those seem completely appropriate to Picasso as well.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a quick question, and maybe silly, but the selling price influence. My question is, does this motivate sellers to price their house higher than the market rate? And if so, does this motivate sellers to do that? And if seller doesn't need to sell for a long time, can it put a high price on it and hope eight people buy the house for more than he could sell it to one person? And if that's the case, are we encouraging higher prices? I don't know where I'm going with this. I don't have answers for basically any of this, but I just suddenly hit, hit on me, hey, wow, if eight people pay a million more, maybe I'll just wait for those people. Has that got any legitimacy? Simone? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah. No, I think you.
I'm not vote guy, so I don't, I don't know.
I, I think you, you make a very good point, you know, it's supply and demand. If there's more demand, then the prices will go up. So I think you, you make a very strong point, and there's some, some merit to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm S, number four, which is a water conservation ordinance update, is going to move to our next meeting. And now it's time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. If anybody has comments on agenda or non-agenda items, please come forward now.
I think we got it. We think we got it.
Mayor Avery, very quickly, speaking of agenda and non-agenda items, I noticed in the lobby you have two written comments. One is about offshore oil drilling, another about spent fuel at San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station. One of them says it's a non-agenda comment, one says it's a comment on agenda item four, both of those are incorrect. These are actually comments about an agenda item. And the agenda item is number 13, which is where you will be considering putting those items on a future agenda. And I just want to emphasize that is an agenda item. They are here on the agenda, and it no longer says it's a non-discussion item, and the purpose of having it here was so you could discuss the merits of having staff devote time to preparing the resolutions that these two are encouraging. So I just wanted to clarify, these are not non-agenda items, it is an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Leon.
Go ahead and give the closed session announcement. The City Council adjourned a closed session to meet with labor negotiators that are designated on the agenda under items four A and B regarding negotiations with the Newport Beach Employees' League, as well as negotiations with the city manager. Of course, the city manager will recuse herself from her item based on potential personal and financial impacts.
All right. What time should we return?
I think 6:30 is doable.
We can do it? Okay, we'll go for it.
6:30. 6:30.
Good evening, everyone. And let's bring the meeting to order for the November 16th regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery, there's no closed session report this evening.
All right, thank you. So now we'll move on to the invocation by Pastor Rick Mixon, Fairview Community Church. And we also, just so you know, we are honored to have World War II veteran Frank Pruselli in attendance to sing the National Anthem. And then Councilmember O'Neill will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please pray with me. God of many names, we take a moment in the midst of our full and busy lives to enter ourselves in something sacred. At this moment, may we all find ourselves in the presence of the holy that surrounds us, giving us life and holding us up through all the challenges and joy that life visits on us. Especially, we pray tonight for this city council as they shoulder the responsibilities of governing this city. We thank you for their willingness to serve and for the time and energy they give to this important work. We pray that they will conduct the business of this city with wisdom and grace, remembering the wisdom and grace of our forbearers, who in our nation's constitution called our governmental leaders to establish justice, to ensure domestic tranquility, to provide for the common defense, to promote the general welfare, and to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. May this great and timeless proclamation inform and guide them in their work and all those who care about good government in Newport Beach. Now bless this work and keep all faithful. Amen.
Amen. So Frank, we're ready now for the National Anthem.
Okay, Fred.
So Frank Pruselli was a World War II vet. He signed up at the start of the war when he was 18 years old. He was in the U.S. Army, 40th Division, in the infantry, and was awarded the Bronze Star in action in the Philippines. And he is going to sing the National Anthem, which he's done in several other public meetings, and he's practiced this for about five years.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we haddled at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And now Mr. O'Neill will lead us in the pledge.
That's amazing. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice over all.
Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to council announcements and oral reports from council members on committee activities. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports?
I do. Diane, we'll talk about our trip to the San Onofre Nuclear Power Plant, and I also attended the Newport Beach Foundation Evening Reception, which that will make you feel very old. I spoke to the Newport Chamber of Commerce, Wake Up Newport Breakfast, and to the Commodores, highlighting the tripartisan initiative for local control, which has a petition circulating to get it on the ballot. And information about this can be found at stopsb9oc.com, or ourcommunityvoices.com, or livablecalifornia.org. Several of us attended the annual Marketing Outlook and Tourism Awards hosted by Newport Beach and Company, and it was a very heartwarming evening honoring the Pyle family who had, has purchased and is restoring the Fun Zone. And it also honored our own fire and police chiefs, Jeff Boils and John Lewis. Diane and I attended the ACCOC Leadership Conference, which was an all-day event. And Will Brad and I met with the staff to start planning for the, the planning process for the general plan update process. I also attended the Speak Up Newport meeting regarding offshore oil drilling, where we heard Senator Dave Mann outline the bipartisan proposal to decommission the remaining oil platforms in state waters off our coastline, and other experts from very, various perspectives also spoke. I'll let Brad talk about the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, but he did an excellent job representing the city of Newport Beach. And then yesterday, I attended, I didn't, I actually didn't do that one, I took that one off my list. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. I was able to speak at the Distinguished Citizens Program run by the Newport Beach Foundation. Great program, and they've now graduated, I believe, a little over 130 people through that, through the program designed to give younger people in our community a sense of local civics. And I just want to say thank you to our police department for all they did over Halloween. And then on Friday upcoming, the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce will host their Citizen of the Year Gala. And the last item I just wanted to make sure I mentioned was attending the memorial for our Newport Beach Police Sergeant Detective Randy Parker. And I wanted to say thank you very much to everyone in our police department who put that together. It was an unbelievably moving and deeply sad, while at the same time celebratory event. So to all of our police officers who are still hurting from the loss of Sergeant Parker, I, I understand completely and wish you well.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, yes, last October 27th was just after the last council meeting. Councilmember Brenner and I went down to the San Onofre, San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station for a tour, because this nuclear plant, nuclear power plant, has been under a decommissioning federal order since 2011, and it's, here it's 10 years later, and it's still taking all this time to do this precisely, carefully, in a very extremely rigorously safe manner. And the issue that we have on consent tonight is also related to the safe disposition of the waste from the nuclear power station. So it was very fascinating. I was impressed, as I think my colleague was, for the extreme safe conditions and operating conditions, and these extremely expert nuclear power engineers are overseeing the de, shutting down of this plant. It's no longer operating, but shutting it down. And it's, the security, the safety, the carefulness, the environmental concerns are impressive, and I was very pleased to have been invited to tour the facility. And it's been, it's still going to be many years before it is totally decommissioned, essentially piece by piece. I too attended briefly the Visit Newport Beach Marketing Outlook Reception and Dinner, again to honor the piles and our chief Lewis and chief Boils for their service and being honored. It was really a night of honor. I only was able to attend the reception. I thought I was coming right back, I had to go meet somebody and come back, and I found out that my husband had planned a surprise party for me, and I didn't know it. So I never got back to the dinner, but I was there at the reception. We had, Councilmember Brenner and I had, and staff, the Ad Hoc Committee on Group Residential Uses to begin, commence the planning and identifying the gaps, if they may exist, in state law primarily, in terms of how we as a city can work with the state as well as the county, but primarily the state is where some of the gaps are in terms of allowing local governments to manage group residential uses. And the first meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Redistricting met on November 8th. We've had several meetings on solid waste management, we'll hear more about that this evening, it's an item under current business. And ACCOC, which for those who don't know, it's Associated California Cities of Orange County, about 30 cities of the 34 cities of Orange County belong to ACCOC. And we had an all-day leadership conference, a lot of good information on a lot of different topics affecting locals, local leaders and cities. And OCOG, another, one of our many acronyms at local government level, Orange County Council of Governments, which is, works in partnership as the Orange County entity of SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. I, I know, it probably gives everybody headaches, but these are the entities that are composed, comprised of elected officials, all, many of us, all of us are members of a local city elected and participate on these regional governing boards that are important, particularly as we deal with housing issues. And this is the Orange, OCOG is the Orange County entity within SCAG that helps represent Orange County's needs as we go through the RENA process. Have not been successful in changing the RENA process, but at least we're part of a larger advocacy group. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. I too had a great time at the Hospitality Awards, honoring the Chief of Police and Fire Chief, as well as the piles. It was, it was wonderful to hear the business perspective for our fire department and our police department, really how much they appreciate them, which is not necessarily true in every city in this country right now, but is emphatically true in Newport Beach. So I think we should all be pretty proud of how well we're served here. I got to attend a meeting with the Irvine Terrace Residents Association, which was very informative. And hopefully I gave them a little information that they wanted and not anything that they didn't, but I'm sure I did. At the same time, I actually happened to be in San Diego, attending a crew meet with both NAC, Orange Coast, and Seabase, all down there. So we're privileged to have three crew teams competing throughout the state. My son is also involved in it, I just wasn't heading to San Diego to watch people row over a long period of time. But it was amazing to see how many people we.
They had a speaker, a U.S. Marine Lieutenant General. He's kind of high up there, but served four extensive tours in the Middle East and lived to tell about it, and he tells a really very good story. So that was pretty inspirational, and there were some excellent prayers given by people of the cloth and civilians as well. Also, attended the Newport Beach and Company Marketing and Outreach Reception, and those folks, of course, really know how to throw an event, and it was very nice. And especially nice to celebrate the hard work of Chief Lewis and Chief Boils during the pandemic. You know, just, it's always good to kind of, for, I think, all of us up here, to just kind of fully understand kind of effort and excellence that we get from our public safety folks, and especially the leadership. And so that was very evident this evening. And also celebrating the David Pyle family, who've done a lot of giving behind the scenes, and some, not so much behind the scenes, in their purchase of the Fun Zone, and they have all the necessary attributes to turn the Fun Zone into something spectacular. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you. So now, we're moving on to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. So we've got four of these. And the first one is Councilmember Dixon has asked the council to consider, and this will be coming back in two weeks, bringing back a resolution supporting the action for spent fuel now coalition, which facilitates a network of stakeholders to make off-site spent fuel storage and/or disposal a priority at the federal level, including for the San Onofre Nuclear Generation site. Let's take a straw vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
Mayor Protam Maldun has asked council to consider allocating funding to hire government affairs firm to represent the city of Newport Beach regarding laws, rules, and regulations related to residential care facilities. Let's take a straw vote.
Seven-zero.
All right. Number three, Councilmember Brenner has also asked council to consider bringing back a resolution expressing support for Initiative 210016, which opposes the legislature of the state of California's adoption of legislation that overrides local zoning and land use authority, and also ensures that zoning and land use authority is retained by local governmental entities that represent the communities in which the residents reside, and also allows local government to participate in solving affordable housing issues through solutions that effectively address the unique needs and conditions of each local community. Let's take a straw vote.
Unanimous, seven-zero.
Okay. And item number four, this one's a short one. Councilmember Duffield and I have asked the council to consider adopting a resolution supporting a ban on new offshore oil drilling off our coast.
That's six-one with Mayor Protam Maldun.
Okay. Thank you.
One more.
There's one more. Number five, siding around the corner. Councilmember Blom has asked the council to consider having staff assess service needs and resources related to fire response in the harbor and present the analysis, costs, and alternatives to the city council.
Unanimous, seven-zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 24. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is pulled from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items to pull from the consent calendar or conflicts to announce related to items one through 24?
None.
Councilmember O'Neal.
None.
Councilmember Dixon.
None.
Councilmember Blom.
I have no conflicts, but I'd like to pull number 17.
Councilmember Duffield.
I have none.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protam Maldun?
Yes, I have conflicts on items eight, nine, 14, 15, and 16, due to potential conflict and future business interest.
Great. Thank you. And I have none. Mayor Protam, do you have a motion?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the balance of consent calendar items one through 24 with correction of the minutes and revisions to item 21 by staff, and no vote by myself on item number 21. Sorry, I missed that. A recusal on items eight, nine, 14, 15, and 16 by myself, and item 17 pulled by Councilman Blom.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All right. Got a second. And now, we'll have public comments on consent calendar items one through 24. Any comments on consent calendars, consent calendar items?
My name is Chuck Fancher. I serve on the city's, on your Water Quality and Tylerlands Commission, Coastal Tylerlands Committee, as does Kurt Black, who just had to leave. We want to just express that your item number 10, a vote and a firm defer, that is appreciated. That is an infrastructure act that may benefit the city in the future. Please vote for it.
Thank you. All right. So we had item 17 removed from the consent calendar.
We still need to vote.
Oh, we still need to vote, yeah. Okay.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance 2021-23, an ordinance of the City Council of Newport Beach amending a development agreement between the City of Newport Beach and Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian Development Agreement Amendment DA 2021-1. Mayor Protam. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
Thank you. All right. Item 17, Mr. Blom.
Thank you. And I don't actually need a staff report on this one, therefore, good. I pulled this item specifically to address something that we've asked staff to come back with us on the rebuilding of the pier and kind of overlooking what we're doing on both of our piers in Newport and the costs associated with it. And I just wanted to draw attention to this item because the costs, this item is essentially billed at about $640,000 to replace a few pilings at the end of our piers, both Valva and Newport, that are in disrepair. We have other pilings that need more work, and I just want the public to be aware that we're spending this money continuously to fix a pier that needs to be completely reimagined, completely redone and rebuilt. And every time we take these moments where it's hodgepodgeing a piece together to repair an element, we're spending huge amounts of money, $640,000, to repair something that we're better than, you know? And I just, I have no issue with the contract with what we're doing. It needs to be done. They've deteriorated into the sea, I understand. Dave and his team did a great job bidding it out. We got a great contract bid on this, way below what some of the other bids came through at. So by no means am I here to point blame at that, but I just want to draw attention for the public that we're spending a huge amount of money every year to maintain something that doesn't speak to the nature or the integrity of what this city is. And as we sit here continuously debating what makes this city great, sometimes I think it's about, we're always talking about what we shouldn't change. And sometimes, it's really important for us to talk about what we need to change to make the city better, to alleviate the problems that we have. We can't always address homelessness by saying this contributes to it. We sometimes have to address it by how can we design our way around it? How can we increase a better traffic? How can we add more private enterprise rather than public space where people hang out? And I think that it comes into all of these smaller items continuously that do make their way through consent as a simple project or a simple understanding, that sometimes, this is what we have to pay attention to. What are we spending our money on? And how can we take that money instead and put it somewhere where it's going to be of a greater use? And oftentimes, we need the public's support more than anything on these items. We need people to want these projects to move forward so that we can build the city that we want to build. Instead of trying to stop the production of small things, we need to look towards the larger plan. And so the only reason I really pulled this was to address that one concept, not just with the few people that are sitting here and the seven people that are listening to this meeting, but for the idea in general that, for those of us that love the city, sometimes the plan has to look farther than the next 15 minutes or the next three hours, but it has to look into the future for our kids and our grandkids, and that's the purpose of why we're all up here, because we care enough. And so I just want to constantly reiterate this fact that the growth and strength of the city requires us to look at everything and build it in the best way, rather than just looking at what we shouldn't do. We have to put all of our energy behind what it is we need to do. No, thank you. That's all I have to add for that.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Yeah, well, I would totally agree with that. Technology and materials have advanced significantly in the last 20 years, and our piers, our two piers, are of old technology. And obviously, with the new materials, we would see much less maintenance in the future, and the cost to operate, maintain our piers would be greatly reduced. In addition, as he was saying, that we can make it much more usable. So it's out there. It's years out there, but I just want to reiterate that that is a true statement that our councilman here has described to you, Noah, and it's, I look at our pier, and I'm just embarrassed about it, but I recognize the tremendous cost that it would take to tear it down and put up something new. But I think with some enthusiastic new life in this council and the future, I know that we are, we have people that would stand up to that. I'm sadly going to be gone, but I will, no, not sadly, I'll be kind of happy. Sorry. No, I'm kidding. But I do, I do think that those piers do represent our city in a way that's unprecedented, and they're in awful shape. So it is, it's great that we're continually maintaining them. That's a good thing, and our staff does a fabulous job of doing it, as Noah said, for the least amount of money. So having said all that, I just would agree with what Councilman Noah says. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? All right. Now, this is the time for anyone from the public that would wish to speak to this particular item, number 17. All right. Seeing none. Do we have a motion? Second. Okay, Mr. Duffield, seconds. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero.
Okay, now, we're moving on to public hearings, and this first one is item 25, a resolution.
Mayor, we have public comments on non-agenda items.
Sorry. Public comments on non-agenda items. This is the time to come forward, non-agenda items.
Hi. John Prun. My wife and I built our home here despite the sometimes painful ordeal of the permitting and inspection process. We'd like to know if you will get an injunction against SB9, or will you let this great city get destroyed? SB9 was signed into law in September, takes effect on January 1st, 2022, but is not known to many California citizens. SB9 allows any California residential lot to be split in two with two units per new lot. A total of four units replaces one home. A suspect Berkeley study estimates that only 5.4% of California homes will change, but that's not true. Also, there are some restrictions on SB9. However, those restrictions will be quickly modified or eliminated by Sacramento. The state will not enforce any restrictions anyway. If a street with 10 existing homes has two of them converted, 20%, then those two homes become eight homes, which is the equal number of the original remaining homes. Will the occupants of those new homes vote for the benefit of Newport Beach? What about the impact of doubling the population overnight? We have the best police and fire department in the world, but they will be overwhelmed. Traffic, parking, schools, hospitals, trash, et cetera, will get worse quickly. Crime will increase. The new law will encourage fast construction of substandard homes, especially with limited city instructors, inspectors. Expect many more nightly rentals with all the accompanying problems. Who benefits from SB9? Not us existing residents, not the cities that we have, that have to deal with this. So who does benefit? Corporate investors that have been buying up residential homes this year, developers, realtors, brokers, lenders, the state and feds that need a place to put all of the people that will adversely change this great city and state. Some of you might think that proposed CA Initiative 21-0016 is a good choice of action. However, it needs signatures, then has to be voted on next November, and it has to pass. With the state against this initiative, there is only a low chance for this to succeed. More importantly, it wouldn't take effect for a whole year. Any conversion started before then will probably stay. An injunction is a difficult thing to achieve, however, if you don't ask for it, you surely won't get one. Remember, judges will be impacted by SB9 also. Will you feel safer with four units on both sides of your house? Will it increase your property values? The state already wants you to create 4,800 more HCD homes. Please retain local control and file for an injunction now before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, on non-agenda items.
Brad, could I just say one thing in response to that? At our next council meeting in our study session, Simone Jurges, our Community Development Director, is going to bring SB9 and 10 back to us with additional information, and we can talk about all the possibilities to fight that at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner. Okay. This is public hearing item resolution number 2021-117, call for review of the Chronodome R76 service station remodel, PA 2019-027. Do we have a staff report?
I believe that Councilwoman Duffield may have a conflict.
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself on the fact that I have personal financial effect from this, so I'm going to, out of caution, recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Avery, and city council members. I am Simone Jurges, your Community Development Director, and with me is Chelsea Krager, Associate Planner. This item is the call for review of the Union 76 Station, which is at the corner of PCH and Avocado. Before Chelsea jumps forward with a very brief presentation, Councilmember Brenner asked me, what can the council consider and not consider? I think it's important for the council to recognize that you're making your decision on this project and this application based on the merits of the project only. It is not based on the individual, the applicant. It is not based on the applicant's history or any experience at the station. It is solely based on the merits of this project. There is a resolution that's attached to the staff report. There are a number of findings. If you approve the resolution, then you're approving those findings, which will support the project. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Krager here. She has a very brief presentation. The applicant has a much more lengthy presentation, so we didn't want to double those efforts. Chelsea?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Chelsea Krager with the Planning Division. I will keep this brief and give you an overview of this project. As Mr. Jurges mentioned, this is a 76 station remodel located at 2201 East Coast Highway. It includes the addition of 232 square feet, discontinuance of the repair shop, the vehicle repair shop that's there.
It is not based on the applicant's history or any experience at the station. It is solely based on the merits of this project. There is a resolution that's attached to the staff report. There are a number of findings. If you approve the resolution, then you're approving those findings, which will support the project. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Krager here. She has a very brief presentation. The applicant has a much more lengthy presentation, so we didn't want to double those efforts. Chelsea?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Chelsea Krager with the Planning Division. I will keep this brief and give you an overview of this project. As Mr. Jurges mentioned, this is a 76 station remodel located at 2201 East Coast Highway. It includes the addition of 232 square feet, discontinuance of the repair shop, the vehicle repair shop that's there, the addition of beer and wine sales, so a new ABC license, and the fuel pumps are proposed to remain in place. Here are some elevations of what is proposed for the architecture. It's located in the Commercial Corridor zoning district, which allows a maximum height of 32 feet. The proposed maximum height of this structure is 23 feet and 6 inches. I do want to mention that at the planning commission, a condition of approval was added that required a revision of the architecture to be less contemporary in design. That would be at the plan check process when they get their building permits. I'm not sure where to point this. So here's a quick overview of the site plan. You'll see the landscape areas in green. The existing convenience market and repair bays are in blue with the area of addition to the left there. Outlined in blue in the middle are those existing fuel bays. You have three driveways, one off of Avocado and two off of Coast Highway. There are three there now, and those three are proposed to remain. There are 10 parking spaces, which does meet the minimum requirement for a service station and convenience market of this size, including one van-accessible space. The proposed floor plan is here. Once again, the existing building is in blue. The area of the addition is in yellow to the left. You come in to the building at the bottom there. To the right is the cashier. There's a condition of approval that is included in the resolution that requires that the cashier be visible to the outside at all times, so the insides of the building have to be oriented such to not block the cashier from the view of the outside. The project includes six modifications of service station standards, and those are listed here. The zoning allows for zero setbacks along the side and rear property lines. However, the service station guidelines require setback of 10 feet for the building and 10 feet of the air and water dispenser. So their proposal is 0 feet for the building and 4 feet for the air and water dispenser. That's similar to what is out there now. Additionally, they're asking for modification from the minimum lot size. Once again, that's in the service station standards. And three of the landscape requirements of the service station standards, including the width of the perimeter planting area, the amount of planting on site, 15% is required by those standards, and they are proposing 9.7, and the quantity of trees around along one side property line where four trees are required and three are proposed. As previously mentioned, the project does include the addition of beer and wine. And here are some of the conditions of approval that are included in the draft resolution to address the addition of alcohol sales, including a training program, no single containers or small wine bottles, security recording, and alcohol sales ending at 9:00 PM in the evening, including the locking of alcohol at 9:00 PM in the evening. A condition of approval was added at the planning commission that does allow for a one-year review of that alcohol closing hour. It allows for the CDD Director, the Community Development Director, with the police chief to review the project, review the one year of operation, and can discretionarily increase or extend the hours of alcohol up to 11:00 PM instead of 9:00 PM. It's not an automatic extension. It's a discretionary review by the director and the police chief. This concludes my presentation. The applicant also has a presentation and a materials board.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Chelsea, I got a question about the rear setback. It says here that there is a four-foot rear setback, but when you visit that site, there's a wall built right on the property line. So would that be what would happen to that wall? And it's a sound wall, I believe.
So the walls are proposed to remain in place. The four-foot that's talked about in the staff report is for the air and water dispenser. The air and water dispenser is 4 feet from that property line.
Okay. But that wall will stay on the property line as a noise?
Yes.
Diffusing device? Okay.
Mr. O'Neil?
Could you pull that presentation back up, please? Could you move forward to the variance requests? Okay, so this is the... Sorry, I'm looking at... I just want to make sure I'm comparing this to our staff report when we were on 25-2, when we're talking about the service station development and landscaping standards, and then their modifications. And the modifications that I read had six changes, and I'm only seeing four bullet points. Am I missing any?
The fourth bullet point is landscaping, and that's a heading, and there are three underneath it.
I see. Got it. And then the standard for deciding whether to approve these variances is founded at the bottom of 25-4, which is, the strict compliance with the standards is not necessary to achieve the purpose and intent of the section. The project possesses compensating design and development features that offset impacts associated with modification or waivers or standards. And then the overall site plan and architectural design is consistent with the City of Newport Beach Design Guidelines for Automobiles, Services, Stations, and Washing. When we're working through these, how do you work through each of these for the second part, which is, the project possesses compensating design and development features that offset impacts associated with the modification? So if we're going through each one, and maybe the applicant has the... Do they, Simone?
That's correct. The applicant really helps out with kind of defining through all this.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, staying on this page, I'm trying to understand. Are we waiving? Are you proposing that we waive the setback requirements?
The setback requirements for those specific pieces.
All right. Let me ask the question another way. Are we waiving any setback requirements? And if so, which ones?
Yes. The side setback requirement of the building is 10 feet, and that's in the service station guidelines. And the rear setback requirement of the air and water dispenser is 4 feet, and that is also in the service station guidelines.
Okay, so maybe that's probably where the conundrum in my mind is. So the side setback requires 10 feet, but there's an overriding requirement that service stations don't need to have 10 feet? Is that what I'm hearing?
So the zoning district, which is Commercial Corridor, actually allows for a setback of 0 feet.
It does.
And then service station guidelines are additional requirements or additional guidelines for service stations, and that's where the additional requirement of the 10 feet comes from. So the setback requirement for Commercial Corridor is 0.
But, oh, okay. But for service station, it's 10 feet?
Correct.
But we're waiving that? Proposing to?
Yes.
Why?
The proposal is that the site is constrained? That's...
All right, but we're waiving it. I just want to understand what we're waiving and then what our action is. Okay. And the lot size is 13-853 provided, but the service station requirement is 14-643. And so we're waiving that?
Yes.
Just because we're nice?
It is a discretionary decision, Councilmember Dixon, and it is an existing lot. That's the size they have. They can't get more.
All right, so, I mean, just to be objective, for any development, any building on a lot, this is the requirement the city requires, then you build according to the lot size, right?
Well, it is an existing development that they're remodeling, the existing building, and expanding it. It doesn't meet the minimum lot size. They're not able to acquire more land, so that's the discretionary decision for the council.
Because I talk to many businesses, especially older structures, business owners with older structures on the peninsula, and many times I hear the reluctance of wanting to remodel or upgrade their facility because they would have to bring their facility into conformance with current law because the building is legally non-conforming. But so now, so I guess this opens the floodgates for people to say, well, the city's going to waive all these requirements.
This is a specific design requirement for the service station, and these are allowed to be modified, as we call them, as you said waived. And so the applicant has requested it, and that's why we're here today.
Okay, and so it's up to us. Staff has said, makes sense to you, but it's up to us. All right. And landscaping, I'm trying to understand, this landscaping requirement is obviously intended, it's why it's in the code, to make certain that our city remains beautiful and the villages remain beautiful, and so now they want, the applicant is suggesting less landscaping than what we require?
The applicant has improved the landscape versus what is existing now, so this is vastly much more improved. I think they've added as much landscape as they can to the site area. There's no other room to add more landscape at this point with this proposed project.
Could they make the building smaller?
They could.
Let me talk about the building design. So did the planning commission... Is it a condition? It's a condition of the planning commission, and is that something for us to agree to or ratify that the design of this building needs to, would be recommended to conform more, have greater compatibility with the rest of Corona Del Mar?
So the...
Structures.
Correct. So the planning commission did impose a condition to work with city staff. They did share their concerns, just as you have, Councilmember Dixon, that it is too contemporary. But they didn't want to try to redesign that building from the dais, and some of them don't have the expertise to do that. But they did want at least the applicant to work with staff to come up with kind of a revised design to be less contemporary. Maybe that red color is just too bright, too red. Maybe it just needs to mute just the color, and I think that's probably where a lot of that focus could be. But that was the condition from the planning commission.
All right, so that would be, again, a staff discretionary action to review that revised design. Is that something that the council should be seeing? I mean, we've had many projects come up here, and they've come to us, and the 25-10 PCH project, they came back with a revised design, and then we approved it. So that might be something we might want to see before we give final approval, is to see what that design looks like.
It could be a condition of the approval, or you can ask for the applicant to return at a later date. Absolutely.
Okay, and, oh, so the property does not have an ABC license at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and what does the police department recommend about granting an ABC license?
The police department provided conditions of approval, and they are not objecting to it as long as those conditions of approval are included, and hours of operation do not extend past 11:00 PM for alcohol sales.
I thought it was 9:00 PM.
It is. The modification is to 9:00 PM, yes. The PD was okay as long as it didn't go past 11:00, and planning commission brought it down to 9:00.
Okay, and what is, the planning commission said, come back in a year? Is that something that we have to approve, or we could say, we should go back to the planning commission? It shouldn't go to staff. It should go back to the planning commission? Would that be a revision to what the planning commission recommended?
So for the council, you can amend that condition? You could strike that condition, or you can change it or keep it?
And I think in the police staff report indicated the number of retail alcohol sales. You've got Bristol Farms, you've got Corkers next door, CVS down the street, and there may be one other?
Rite Aid.
A Rite Aid, okay. So we have, okay, excuse me. So just taking note that there's a lot of retail alcohol and Corkers as well. That's concerning to me, but I'll address that later. All right, that's fine for now. Thank you.
So we're clear. Alcohol means beer and wine establishment?
Yes, beer and wine only.
So it does not mean liquor?
That's correct.
And police said, hey, it's okay up to 11:00. Planning said, let's bring it down to 9:00.
That's correct.
So you were correct when you said 11:00.
Yes.
Yes. Good job. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other council comments. Joy, are you thinking about?
No, I want to wait until after the applicant makes their presentation, and then I'll make remarks.
Thank you. Mr. Keanipur?
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Hamid Keanipur. My wife, Amethis, and I have lived in Corona Del Mar for 25 years. We have raised our children in CDM. I was a board member on CDM Business Improvement District for nearly six years. I have volunteered on many different public endeavors. This Unical Station is our family-run business that we purchased in 2003 and have been serving the community of CDM since. We are not some nameless corporate store that is... This is our livelihood. As you may know, this station has been here since the early '50s, maybe late '40s. The current building was constructed after a new conditional use permit was granted back in 1972. We replaced the existing gas canopy about 10 years ago. As you know, the car repair business has changed much since 1972. As our cars have become more and more complex, fewer people bring their cars to the corner gas station, and as a result, it is no longer a profitable business. After investigating the viability and suitability of several options, including a car wash, we have decided to remodel the existing building and change the mechanic's bay and snack shop to a full convenience store. This required the new conditional use permit, which was approved by the planning commission at their October 7 meeting after over two and a half, almost three years of effort. We started this project back in 2018. After several people raised concerns after the planning commission approval, Councilwoman Brenner kindly called the project up to be heard by the city council tonight. The concerns that we have heard so far, several issues have been brought up in emails, so we thought we would try to address some of those issues. Beer and wine license. Our project is a convenience store that sells beer and wine and not a liquor store. While beer and wine isn't our primary revenue source, it is an important ingredient to the store's success. Our store meets the conditions to have a beer and wine license for off-site consumption. In addition, the city has heavily conditioned our project, including these conditions. We will be required to cease beer and wine sales after 9:00 PM. We are not allowed to sell single-serving containers, which seem to be a favorite of the homeless. To put that in context, Corker Liquors next door, next door to us, has a full liquor license and are allowed to sell up until 2:00 AM and can sell single-serve containers. Traffic was another issue that we heard about. Of course, we are all concerned about traffic as it affects our quality of life. As CDM residents, my wife and I have had to deal with this as well. Though the lengthy review process, we have had to prepare a traffic study which shows that the impact will be negligible. But the city included additional restrictions that we cannot have food prepared to go like a Subway-Sumway shop in order to limit the intensity of the use. Homeless problem. We're not happy with this either. We know the city is struggling with this all over town. We would love to have the bus stop relocated away from our station. We cannot tell you how many little airplane liquor bottles we pick up out of our landscaping every morning. We have additional requirements from the Newport Beach Police Department, include a camera surveillance system and a training program for our sales associates and a program to stop loitering and better lighting. Design. We have spent considerable time and money designing the project and have scaled it back based on community input, from a two-story, 4,000-square-foot store to a 2,200-square-foot two-story store to a simple 232-square-foot expansion of the existing building for 1,995 square foot. In addition, we are updating the ADA access and improving the parking, as well as replacing and increasing the existing... and increasing the existing and tired landscaping. The gasoline islands and canopy will remain as they are. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Scott to give you an overview of the project.
Scott.
Thanks, Hamid. Scott Piattar, architect and project manager for Hamid on this gas station, is ready for me to go. So you can you can see on your screens on the existing site, you've got the store in the back, clarification for the difference between the variances or modifications. You have the zoning, which we comply with, it's zero setback. And obviously, when it was built in the 40s, early 50s, there was no service station ordinance that overlaid the zoning. So the current site doesn't meet the current standards for the service station standards. And so we are asking for modifications for those. But we are trying to make improvements in other areas to compensate for where we are getting modifications. This station wouldn't be approved today in its current use and its current design based on those modificat those standards without modifications. You can see the existing stand, the existing building on one of the few rainy days that we've had with the with the service bays fairly busy. It's a it's a tired building. The building was built, the approval was in 72, was built soon soon thereafter. The canopy, which Hamid explained, was is about 10 years old. Lighting and the canopy are all relatively modern. The original submittal called for the expansion in the two-story building, basically in the in the rear corner. We're filling in that back corner where we're doing it. There's a 10-foot yard space in the back between the Corker Liquor Site to the east and the building. This was the original design, trying to come up with something that was more iconic and would make a statement coming into the city. You can see it can be fun, it can be playful, that kind of architecture, but realizing it didn't fit in the community, came back with a much more subdued, reducing the the second floor to 350 square feet, overall 2,240. And this was the the design with a reduced second floor and reduced mass on the residential side of the building. This doesn't show the reduced mass in the back, but it shows the the design of the the proposed building. And then later, we refined it even further, reduced the square footage or the mass in the rear, added some technical details, and this was the what the project that was going to go to the planning commission in 2020. So at that point, based on community input, we decided to go old school. Now, this is just a great old picture I found. But based on that feedback, we eliminated the second floor. One of the objects of of ire, shall we say, is the 7-Eleven. 7-Eleven has a bad reputation. Hamid will tell you that he was interested in them because they had a very, very good training program and established franchisee. So it would allow a person to who hasn't done a C-store before to be able to be trained and and come into a system. But it wasn't cheap and based on the input from the community, no problem getting rid of it. He had no no contractual arrangements with them and has since found other ways to get that training help and support and and remain an independent convenience store. So it'll be independently branded and again, we worked with CDMRA and the Chamber of Commerce and we've gotten approvals from both of those bodies. Many other residents have come in and longtime business customers and have signed petitions, which were part of the original package. The proposed site now, as you can see, less iconic. You can see the crosshatching there in the upper left-hand corner of the site. That's the 232-square-foot addition. The other the remaining part is the existing footprint, the existing building. And you'll see that we the current site has tandem parking, which is fine for mechanic's bays, tougher for C-store. So we moved the parking around and when you count the eight fueling spaces, you really have 18 parking spaces on the site. This parking, this site has a lot of parking. We improved the ADA access and like Hamid said, we're probably we're replacing the old tired landscaping, replacing it with current upgraded landscaping and trying to get as much bang for the buck on the landscaping. The elevations and I've got a pillar and materials board here, which is basically that elevation, but you can actually see the materials. This would be the material that you could see underneath the red band and above the glass and then, of course, the storefront. And I'm going to point this backward so and one of the things, based on the feedback from planning commission, the red color seemed to be very objectionable to most people. So we've come up with an alternative where the 3D or three dimensions of the, I'm going to go back a slide, of that red band is reduced and then we changed the color to it's kind of a wood grain color, although it's still a metal building panel. So if anybody wants to come and look at it, I can pass these around if you like. So our response to tone it down, we took the vertical element where the sign will be and toned that down to the gray rather than the red and then put the wood grain across the band. So the architecture is very similar, but much more subdued than the red that you see here. And you could see the, again, the change that we had. See, where am I going with this? Got it. So again, the wood grain, you'll still have the overhang. This is very much in keeping with a lot of the architecture in CDM. CDM is very, very eclectic. There is it ranges from an old cottage to Cape Cod to modern farmhouse designs and ultra-modern homes. You see that reflected in the residential, you see it reflected in the commercial up and down the street. In fact, I think that that as an architect is one of the things that gives CDM its charm and that's why I like living there. Again, from this is perspective from the other side, removing the red. A lot of questions have come up regarding lighting. We want enhanced lighting. We want the site to be illuminated. It helps deter vandalism, loitering, or homeless hanging around. But we don't want the light going into the neighborhood. So you could see in the upper right-hand corner, very much like a lot of our modern streetlights are, as we've upgraded all to LED, they're a nice sharp cutoff fixture LED, they're aimed at the site and they're on a pole that's only about 15 feet tall. So you're not going to get a lot of light spill out, but you'll have a lot of light on the site. And I am available to answer any questions that you might have if I haven't already addressed them.
Questions?
I had one quick one. The the home that's being built behind the 76 station, do you have any idea how tall that building is for by so we can compare it to the?
It's taller than our building.
It would be taller than even the far right feature?
It is. I happen to know the architect on that. It's to the max 29 feet.
And the far right-hand side is 23?
The yes, the tall sign part portion is 23.
Okay. All right.
The rest of the building is about five feet lower.
Okay.
Simone, I one of the questions I had for you that I'd like you to share with people is if Hamid decided to not do a convenience store on this property and even to sell the property, what other uses could this be for and what type of buildings do you think we might get then?
Certainly. So this is a corner lot on Coast Highway, so it's a very prominent property. It'll get a lot of attention from the retail industry. You know, it is commercial zone, so you're looking at retail restaurant, you know, your your consideration or your constraints is going to be parking. But the zoning allows for your fast food, your drive-through, so you know, don't be surprised. And we get phone calls all the time from Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Del Taco of all of all people, always looking for sites and opportunity. And this is a commercially zoned property on the corner, which is worth a lot more for all these fast food, drive-through type of establishments. Clearly, you have parking constraints, drive-through stacking issues. But you know, it is a retail zone and so all those uses I mentioned is could be possible on that property.
Thank you. I'm always concerned about when we fight something that sometimes we can get something worse in the in the long run. So that was one of my questions. I also wondered, is there any reason that Hamid could not in the future, or if he sold this property, the next owner could not decide to put a 7-Eleven in then? Is there any constraint on that?
Can I address that? Just of the requirements, 7-Eleven is not interested in the site. They require a minimum of 3,000 square feet so that they can put their sign and logo on it. My facility is only 1,995 square feet. They will never consider my facility for a 7-Eleven store.
What about other gas station-type retail? Would they would they perhaps do it if it was if you sold it to someone else? Could they turn that into one of their type of convenience stores?
I'm not sure which one you we're talking about.
Simone?
So council member Brenner, we can't cannot control who comes and operates the the convenience store. That's something that we just can't cannot regulate.
We can't regulate that, but
No.
Hamid has voluntarily agreed to not have one of those convenience-type stores
Correct.
while he's the owner of this property. Okay. And lighting, I'm I'm just concerned that when the lighting is installed, if there's a problem with it, that we have some way of rectifying that. I mean, I feel like they would probably solve the problem if it was interfering with neighbors. But is there any way of stipulating that or making sure we get to review that?
Certainly, we can do a lighting inspection at the end of the construction, so we'll do a nighttime inspection. We could add that condition and one of our code enforcement offices will go out there and ensure that the lighting is shielded properly.
Okay. That would probably be a good idea. And let's see, I did want to mention that Hamid went to the Corona del Mar Residents' Association twice with this project and it was advertised on the on their agenda and it was advertised on their website. And I don't know how many people came just to hear your presentation there, but he did make that effort. And I I just always encourage people to be involved with that organization because that's how you can have an impact earlier rather than later. And then I have a motion to make, but I'll do that after our next two council members speak.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. Simone, can you briefly touch on what the environmental impact and what would happen with that site if someone did try to change it over to another use other than gas station? If we were to pull those tanks out and what we'd have to do, the soil inevitably?
Thank you, council member Blom. So typically, when the property is sold or it's leased over, there's a phase one that's conducted and that phase one would really do a kind of historical review of that property, identifying it is a gas station. So they would automatically require a phase two, which would require the property owner to do boring samples and soil testing to see if there's any contamination. That contamination will tell the lesse or the buyer if it's contaminated or not contaminated, whether it can be remediated or it cannot.
Wonderful. And just in my history over some projects that have existed over the course of Newport Beach history, we have some some long periods of contamination that we have to get over. You know, one was in East Bluff when I grew up. That was the old gas station down there that I think sat vacant for 10 years, is an empty lot. We have a couple currently in Canary Village that have maintained the same type of issue. And so, you know, my fear is is that sometimes when we look towards the alternative, it becomes nothing better than what we have. In fact, it becomes a lot worse. And you know, you know, from a personal point, I see a lot of friends out in the audience that do not like this project and I get it. I understand. The growth we want here is the growth we want here. But I also have to bring up this very important point that when anyone wants to improve their project and is willing to go through the, I love you guys so much in planning, by the way, the god-awful process of which it is to go through the planning. And I know Hamid knows what I'm talking about right now. But it's a long, long, long process and and you understand why it is. It's because we do really care about the city. The planning department really, really, really cares about the city. We don't want to put things in that increase homelessness, increase vagrancy. And I've heard so many arguments back and forth, you know, we have to save Corker, we have to do this. And you know, being on the business side of this dais, it is hard for me sometimes to sit up here and say, if I'm willing to invest money into my property and I'm willing to listen to the residents, so much so that I'm willing to revise a property four times and get rid of the red, put some some wood there, get rid of this idea, move to this. It is really, really hard for me to say we don't want that reinvestment in. And when I hear about the alternatives and those alternatives have been broached and we've spent a lot of time on them, sell the property, make it something else. Nobody wants a vagrant lot there. Nobody does. And a vacant lot sitting for three or four years while somebody does an environmental analysis on that property is much, much worse for the city than a redesign of a mini-market that's currently a garage. You know, I think there's a lot of people, maybe even here, that would like that 76 ball torn down. Hamid, you're looking at him.
I would gladly.
But I've seen the plans, you know, and and so I spend some time wandering around the neighborhood and I understand there are a lot of angry residents and I understand that. You know, we we love our Newport. We love what it is. We don't want more vagrants walking down from the bus depot. I live right across the street from it, I know. But sometimes I think that what we think will bring more homeless people in is the opposite because the investment we put into our property, when we start spending millions of dollars to rebuild something, we don't want that happening. We want it to be better, not worse. And I think it puts us in a really tough position sometimes where we're looking at these projects all as being a negative. You know, maybe this spurns Corker to do a remodel, to maybe put some money into that building as well. Please. I think that it speaks to Corona del Mar as a whole with we have a problem in that entire district right now with, and I apologize to anybody, but realtors and rug stores, we need more than that. And sometimes it requires the investment and the challenge of getting through this process and it is a challenge. This is not easy as all of you are up here and we have a whole separate binder because of what the residents think pro or for or pro or against. And so when I look at somebody that's willing to throw away a 7-Eleven and that probably comes with some real decent revenue sources attributed to it and move to an entirely different model that does speak to the residency, that remarkets, rebrands, we just get to a point. As I did walk around the neighborhood, I did meet the the resident who lives directly behind Hamid, Robert Painter. For many of you that grew up here, you know Bonzo. And I was surprised to know that he was for this project and hilariously, he stops by Corker almost every day. And I thought it was, that sounds not good, but whatever, we'll we'll roll right over that. And I think the idea is that sometimes there is there is always a give and take here. But when I sit up here and I look out and I look at the design that's brought in for us and I see four different designs that have come through, I don't see somebody trying to exploit our town. I just don't. I don't see somebody that wants a homeless problem. I don't. I see somebody that's built a family and an enterprise here that wants what's best for the community. And it might not always be in our view or in line with what it is we want. I get that. But we don't get to decide on that and that's not what the job of the dais is. We're not a design review committee. We're here about code. And when a building has been built the same way for 60 years, is it really our job to say that this needs to be rebuilt in a different way? Because I'm going to tell you, Corona del Mar will never be rebuilt. There will be no new restaurants, there'll be no new retail because if everything has to maintain what the current codes are, everything will be a reality store and everything will be a rug shop by the time we're all done here. And not to say we don't all need rugs and houses, but there is a point where we like walking down and enjoying the Christmas walk. And I'm not saying CDM Market is going to be the flourish of that. But I do have a hard But I do have a hard time denying something because we don't like it. The idea of what we like or don't like has nothing to do with us on this dais. It's the idea of, is this the free enterprise that they've proved, that they've tried to make it as good as they can? Yeah, they have. And so I kind of have to stop it there, but, you know, it's not that agreement with what somebody's put forth is not that we like what is happening. It's just that they are conforming to the rules and regulations we put forth, and we have to do our best to approve those based on those situations. Otherwise, we overregulate this world. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Mr. Piotta, what's the canopy going to look like with this new color scheme?
Right now, the canopy stays as is. Hamid will tell you that he's negotiating with other dealers, likely a Shell station. So it would likely have Shell colors put on the canopy.
So I understand maybe for Shell, for example, would be yellow.
Right.
But are you able to use the same color surrounding it that you see on this proposal?
We would try to, as we go through the process with Shell, to incorporate, for instance, the wood, same wood grain or whatever, to try and tie the architecture together. We just don't know right now.
Simone, based on your experience, are we able to make these large oil companies do what we want for signage?
For their color schemes or branding, probably not.
How about outside of their emblem? Are we able to, or is it?
You know, they have trademark protection with regards to their emblem, so outside of the emblem, maybe. But when we're focusing on the canopy, it's a territory that I'm not familiar with as far as the negotiations for those big oil companies.
So I would rather make our vote on the design and hold off on the color until you have that settled personally, so that there could be some coordination, because I think it's really important. I liked this much more than the prior, but I personally would not be in a rush to commit to this, especially since it'll take a while to get to the painting, until we know more about how you're able to match the canopy. That's just me. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
I have a similar question to Councilmember Muldoon. I'm wondering if the wood look design on the building could be carried out to the edge of the canopy to make these buildings go together and then use the Shell or whatever color insignia goes with the gas that you end up selling as highlights for that.
What about, I don't know if the Shell would go along with that, and as Simone said, they protect their colors. What about if we took the Shell colors and put it on the building so they can match and have a harmony?
I think that would be problematic again for the community. My other question about this was, you know, in Carmel, I believe they have design standards where the gas stations have to, and in other places as well, where the gas stations have to fit into the community. Isn't that true?
So with Carmel's specific plan for their downtown area, they do have very tight regulations. I think the issue that, or my unfamiliarity is going to be, since we don't have design standards, how do we mandate specific designs on the canopy with Shell? And I think Mr. Piotta stated that they still don't know yet, they're still working through that, and I think that's kind of an important piece.
It would be nice if they would go along with you on that, because I think the community would feel a lot better if this was a coordinated corner and looked, you know, more designed. This is not my favorite design, but it's my favorite of the ones you've had so far. So I prefer the Lido House designs, so that one, I bet you could have gotten through the community a lot easier. Okay, that's all the questions I have for right now, but I did, if anybody else has questions for the applicant, I wanted to ask a question of Tony Bryne, the traffic engineer. Hi, Tony. You and I had a conversation yesterday about this and about the reason that there was not a traffic study done. I'd like for you to talk a little bit about that and also talk about, several people have sent us emails mentioning the U-turn on PCH going north to going south on PCH. So could you talk about that also and whether eliminating that would create more problems or whether it would solve problems? And the other suggestion you had was that, once this is done and complete, that you would keep an eye on this intersection and think about restriping if it was necessary to move traffic off of Avocado more easily. So could you talk about those?
Yes. The traffic phasing ordinance, which is in our municipal code, has thresholds for completing a traffic study. And this project did not generate over 300 trips per day as a project, which would then require us to do a traffic phasing ordinance study. And that study would look at levels of service at intersections, but we also, as part of the project, looked at the onsite circulation and the movements at the intersection themselves. So we did do a traffic study, but that was part of our review. The U-turns at Avocado and Coast Highway, there's a very heavy number of U-turn movements coming from Coast Highway going back into Corona Del Mar. And a lot of those U-turners go into Corona Del Mar proper, either making right turns on Begonia or Acacia. Many of the cars actually go into Corona Del Mar itself, so they continue south on the highway. A number of cars will make the U-turn and then park in front of businesses such as Ruby's or Panini or Quirker. So there are a lot of U-turning vehicles at the intersection, and I'd be reluctant to restrict the U-turns because it would impact people going into Corona Del Mar, people going to businesses, residents in the neighborhood. And then the third item was Avocado, and it was restripped in 2016 to provide for the bike lanes, the buffered bike lanes, which then restricted at least the entrance into the intersection down to a single lane. And I'm certainly open to reviewing Avocado again and potentially restriping that first block to open it back up to what it was pre-2016. We can certainly look at doing that with the project or as we observe traffic as part of the project.
Okay, and one of my concerns about eliminating the U-turn was that I could see people making a left on Avocado and going down to the first opening and making a U-turn there and further impacting the Avocado traffic. So I see your points on that. Okay, I think that's it for me for right now.
Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on the corporate signage. I mean, franchise and corporations have, deal with cities all over the world that have very tight restrictions on signage and building design, but the use of their corporate signage. I mean, even McDonald's here in Newport Beach has a smaller, reduced size. I don't know if they did that on their own without our requirement, because we do have, Mr. Juerges, we do have sign standards.
Absolutely, we do have sign standards. And regarding the canopy, you know, one suggestion I have would just provide added condition, just to have the canopy match the design of the building.
But corporations, not just oil companies, they all have, every single one of them that has a corporate identity standard has the knowledge of dealing with some communities who have very rigorous signage and design standards, which we do not. So that is within their corporate tools that they provide to local communities. So I don't think it's a hard discussion with Shell to say, give us your very best, least conspicuous type of signage. I am very pleased and thank you for working through this process and to listen to the community's concerns on a better design. I too do share Councilmember Brenner's point to bring more of a nautical look or, I don't like necessarily stucco, but something other than, what is that, metal? But I can't mandate that. I just like a warmer type feeling. When you look, you said earlier that 7-Eleven requires larger square footage in order to put a 7-Eleven in there. So what you have designed or what you're proposing for your little convenience store, so the beer and wine plus other items. Now, the store itself will be open to 11:00 PM, is that correct? But the alcohol sales ends at 9:00 PM, is that?
That is correct.
Okay. And then you, did I hear you say 6:00 AM you start, alcohol sales start? Did the planning commission look at that time? And what was their opinion on that?
Yes, they left the 6:00 AM start in the conditions.
What time does Quirker's open? Do we know, to sell alcohol?
I don't know off the top of my head. We may be able to look it up.
Nine?
The ABC allows 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
True, but you could always adjust to whatever hours. You don't have to necessarily go with ABC.
Quirker's doesn't have any restrictions, so they actually are allowed to open at 6:00 and close at 2:00.
But that's what, but they, I don't know, somebody said in the audience that they open at 9:00, is that?
I couldn't tell you.
So Councilmember Dixon, so they range from 9:00 to 9:30, and on Saturdays they start, they open at 11:00 AM.
Quirker's?
Correct.
All right, would you be willing to open, or you could open the convenience store, but start selling alcohol at a later hour?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Those are all my questions for now. Let's hear from the public. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor? Like Simone was saying, I don't think we'd have a problem. Right now, we tried to meet the planning commission's design guideline requirement, tried to make that change. But if we wanted to include, you know, that we would tie the canopy architecture to the building architecture in some form and modify that condition, we'd be okay with that. We do have limitations in that the structure can't hold about a bunch of weight, but as long as we can build it and it, per code, we're happy.
Yeah, I think it's a market, it's an improvement, and, I mean, I like the Lido House too, but I think you can get a little too much Lido House going on. So I think this is a nice contrast to that, so.
You know, one of the things I didn't point out too is, the siding of the building in the back like this really does keep all the light and noise pollution from PCH as much as possible from the residential. And even if you had a 10-foot yard in the back, all you'd end up doing is having an opportunity to introduce more noise into that area. So from a, from the neighbor's perspective, and we've talked to Robert, you know, he likes the idea of having, you know, a bigger wall there. And this metal design and contemporary design faces PCH and Avocado. It doesn't face the back. You know, you basically have the same building in the back. So it's lower in the back, we kept the parapet down, and we tried to keep it as low in scale as we could. And we didn't bring that same contemporary design around the residential side. So it kind of has two faces. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's all going in the right direction as far as the structure itself, in my opinion. So, no other member of council comments? All right. So now we're here.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We'll hear from the public. So those of you that want to speak, if you could come down and sit in these front rows so we can get through this. I'm not sure how many of you want to speak, but we want to just hear everybody, but at the same time, go home before midnight. Now, just, they're moving down.
Down, I'll wait till everybody comes in, but this is the copy of part of the copy.
Keep talking to the microphone.
This is part of the copy that was made available to the public on Monday, but you received as your board packet. This is the planning department's recommendation, and you can see how hefty it is. I don't know how you could possibly begin to absorb all this material over a weekend. I had a hard time. I realized that my comments and letters to the board were not included. I realized that the Quirker owners' petition was not part of the package in the package that was available to the public, and it's not part of the board package. It may have been available to you subsequent, so I don't know what other error or submissions are. That was huge. Additionally, I went to the police department to pick up my public request for public records today, and this is their report of activity, of reports in our zone, which is R44, the number of requests for service in our Begonia Flower Street neighborhood and on the businesses surrounding. And briefly summarizing, the crime statistics without a convenience store are up in our zone 244%. They went down in other zones, but our zone is up 244%. And we've had 1,400 calls for service. Thank you, Newport Beach Police, for your keeping us safe, responding. Those are 1,400 calls since August, since the police report was presented in the planning commission report. There was no update. So I've said, well, you can't make a decision without an update. So my point tonight is, this amount of information, this amount of new information from the police, I think all this over-the-counter, essentially, items that you're seeing tonight, I would suggest that we both not vote to approve the resolution tonight, that there's too much new information, too much to process from the community, that we voted, that you give yourselves and the community an extended period of time and refer it back to study sessions so you can process the design change, the changes of operation, things that came up just recently. Now, I want to speak really briefly to some of the changes that were in the plan that were apparent just this week. Now, we saw originally, it's in the city council, it's in the planning, recommendation of police planning, that the hours of operation would be, oh, it was six to midnight, liquor ending at 11:00. That was the recommendation. In planning, which the minutes were not available to the public till this Monday, did we discover that in fact, planning had gone forward and put a temporary experiment in place, which says liquor will be sold just till 9:00 for one year. At the end of that year, community director and the police department will review it. But the approval that you're being asked to approve today is like a constitution. The constitution provides till 11 o'clock. If there aren't any mitigating circumstances, 11 is what will stand at the end of one year. So it's, yes, in fact, there's always two sides, 9:00 till the first year, automatic or limited, no public input, the second year, and going till 11:00. So the hours of operation to review, 6:00 to 12:00. Gas pumps, new to me, 24-hour operation. That was never part of the original proposition, 24-hour gas pump. Today, there was a sign that said, if you need help and can't take a debit card, go see the cashier, which means that there will be somebody there.
Thank you for your time.
We won't have time to talk about the police report, but that's the reason why you should postpone this vote tonight and take time to look at what the new findings have to say. It's really important that you know what the police department reports as public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your opportunity to present to you.
No clapping, please. Please.
I'm Doreen Curci Chandler. I live in, I've lived in CDM for 50 years. Thank you for allowing me to express my opinion. I live in Irvine Terrace with 364 other households. When our neighbors in the Village and in Irvine Terrace enter our communities from PCH and Avocado, the following is what occurs on a daily basis several times per day. First, we drive down MacArthur and often wait in a long line of cars. We know that we will be needing to traverse the complete northbound PCH highway to get into the left-hand turn lane on PCH and Avocado, which comes up extremely quickly. So we wait for a break in oncoming traffic. The cars behind us become frustrated and often honk their horns. We then hurriedly turn right onto PCH while at the same time crossing over a bike lane, very dangerous itself, I might add, while trying to mitigate, I'm sorry, while trying to migrate into quickly approaching oncoming traffic. At that point, we attempt to traverse several lanes to enter the cutout, to turn left onto Avocado to go to our homes. This again comes up very quickly because of the short span of highway between MacArthur and Avocado. Since most of the cars in that lane are trying to make a U-turn, it becomes very congested with a line of cars attempting to make that light. Often, we miss that light entirely and have to wait for the light to turn green again. However, what most often happens due to such congestion at that light is that we miss the turn completely and have to turn up Avocado instead of down Avocado and make a U-turn near CDM Plaza and re-approach our entrance from that angle. That's just Irvine Terrace, 364 homes. There's also all of the Village residents. Alternately, sometimes it is difficult to make that even work due to congestion at that corner, and we have to cross past our entrance altogether and do a U-turn across from Newport Beach Country Club so that we can swing around and re-approach our entrance that way. I can only imagine how the addition of a mini-mart with many more quick I can only imagine how the addition of a mini-mart with many more quick stops at that corner will greatly exacerbate our issue that we deal with day in, day out. I believe a mini-mart will make for hazardous travel, being dangerous for pedestrians and car traffic alike. I know my neighbor was just recently broadsided at that corner. In order to avoid accidents and possible fatalities, I would like to request an in-depth traffic study to be conducted. I feel that this is a very important, as well as dangerous, corner. We as homeowners that are exposed to this hazardous driving situation day in and day out would like the council to pause on this proposal so that the council can better inform the people that are affected by this corner the most, our neighbors, what the impact of adding a mini-mart to the mix will truly be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council people. I'm Jeff Woodman, homeowner in Corona del Mar, been here for 25 years. My wife and I reside here. I'm requesting a continuance of the proposal so we could all have more time to review the impact to the community of Corona del Mar on the applicant, Hameed's, request to build a 2,000-square-foot 7-Eleven-type store. Want to make a side note here, I checked on these 7-Eleven stores, and the average store size is 2,438 square feet, the average on 7-Elevens. This proposed market, obviously, is next door to Corker Liquor that also sells beer and wine, but with more limited operating hours, as recently discussed. I talked to Tony Bryant today in traffic and want to make these points real quick. He confirmed that the delivery trucks will have to park on premise to deliver orders, and these are not small trucks. Tony visualizes the delivery trucks parking next to the building, so it may be a challenge for cars to get around some of these trucks. He tells me the construction workers will need to park their cars and trucks on site, and he confirms that the store employees must park their cars on site. Currently, there are 10 required parking spots for this business by the city, but in reality, there are seven, because if you have two employees and you have the handicap parking, basically, there will be seven. The PowerPoint from Chelsea to the planning commission, and she did a great job, however, we talked about it today, it's not to scale showing the gas pumps in the canopy area, so it's a little bit deceiving. Looks like it's a lot bigger and it isn't. Will the station be operational during demolition and building of the 7-Eleven? What's the proposed timeline to start and finish the 7-Eleven-type store? How are larger vehicles and trucks to get in and out of the station with vehicles in the parking spaces? Some larger vehicles would not have enough room to maneuver. And keep in mind that Tony was calculating the average vehicle length at 19 feet. There's an environmental question that's come up that I keep hearing about an ongoing 20-year Unical environmental lawsuit regarding leakage of the gas tank. So I think that's something to think about or look into. A email was sent to Joy Brenner by Kent Moore with more detail on this. Regarding the reports, real quick, on 7-Eleven, Circle K, there are 15 times more likely to have a police call these stores than Papa's or Corker Liquor, and that's in the report. I think that's just staggering.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Avery. My name is W. Stevens. I'm a resident of Corona del Mar and also president of the Corona del Mar Residents' Association. This applicant came to us several years ago presenting his initial plans and what it would look like, and there were a lot of comments about the development at that point in time. It was a very modern, almost like spaceship kind of looking, you know, development. That applicant took those comments back, also the two-story was a bit of a concern, especially with the residents behind it. The applicant took those concerns that we had expressed and made modifications to his application. He brought those back to us this summer. We took a look at him. We thought he had addressed our concerns well. So one story, not quite as big, looked a lot more, you know, low-key, not the modern design. To me, the design looks kind of like Mothers is looking right now, kind of, it's got the red with it. I kind of like it personally. Everybody has a different opinion on that. I don't really have a comment to make on that, but he's taken all of our concerns and addressed them, so the board voted to support his proposal. I personally think that corner needs to be upgraded. It's kind of the entrance into Corona del Mar, and it's really tired. I mean, it's an old mechanics building at the moment, so I would just like to see it upgraded. But generally speaking, the board and myself support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, John Hollern. I've been Irvine Terrace since 1976. Noah, can I please get you guys to put the plot map up again? Is that possible? The reason for this, I've lived in Irvine Terrace all that time, that's been my gas station, I know it by heart. There's some issue that you need to understand about the safety of it. The plot, yeah, that guy. Yeah, is that just him? Okay, if you take a look, there's the, you're supposed to have a nine-foot-wide parking spot. If you look at the ones on the left, the very bottom one is labeled 8.6. There is no label on the one above it or above that. Then it starts at 9.0, 9.0, 9.0. So you've got three spots that are, one for sure is out of code, two that are not. But the most important thing is that alley in the middle, it's 20 feet. I don't know if you can read that. It's on this, if you guys want to look at it. This is the bigger version of that. It's only 20 feet wide for all of the activity to come in from the right, go down it and leave. I went in today to get gassed, and the reason I know this to be true through the years is when it was raining, I knew which, where I had to go. The canopy doesn't cover you. My car's an Audi VQ7, 17 feet long. I pull up to the left-side pump, either one of them, on the left-hand side of the thing. My gas is, gas tank is three feet from the rear. I've got seven, I've got 14 feet ahead of that. I have got at least 10 feet into that 20-foot entrance there. No car can back out of those spots. No car can come around and go down that alley. That is too small an area, absolutely. And I don't understand how the traffic guy blew it and didn't see it. It's labeled 20 feet, but when you go to a pump, you pull ahead of the pump and the gas is in the rear. You've got all that sticking out forward. Go measure it. Go see it yourself. If, I don't know if any of you guys have gone to the gas station we're talking about, but this, one idea of flowing from the right, going around and coming to the left will not work under that design at all. And one more comment to Noah, I agree with you a whole bunch. One thing, though, if I ever put my money out, I will make sure I do it to code, and I would not rely on seven people to bail me out, okay? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Evening, Mayor, Councilmen, City Staff. I'm Robert Gregory. I live in Irvine Terrace. I'm born and raised in Corona del Mar. I've lived in Irvine Terrace for over 45 years. I know that corner very well. In fact, I stole my first piece of bubble gum at Corker Liquor and got reprimanded and had to take it back. So I'm well aware of the corner. There's a variety of traffic issues with the U-turn there. It's a dangerous intersection. Mr. Hollern, who just spoke, their daughter was T-boned at that intersection as well years ago. I get stuck in that turn lane continually every day with all the people making a U-turn there and have to wait another cycle to be able to make a left down the street into the neighborhood. Cars pulling out of the service station onto Avocado who want to proceed north on PCH, block the right turn lane to head southbound from Avocado onto PCH, often blocking the through lane heading right up here to the Civic Center just to get into that left turn lane, which further causes traffic. I think the last design, I reviewed all four designs, the three previous, this last one, it's a great improvement to the corner. However, I strongly oppose a convenience store market there, as we have three liquor stores in Corona del Mar, there's a liquor store, convenience store right next door, we have 22 restaurants, most of which have bars, there's four markets that are close by, and Mothers Market going in, in the center of town. There's, the need is filled in Corona del Mar, and I just wanted to voice my opinion to have my opposition heard here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Dean Chandler, and I live in Irvine Terrace. I've been there for over 30 years. I have concerns about the project, which include, it's getting redundant, but no traffic study completed. Already, cars queue up in the Avocado PCH turn lane, and, you know, the U-turn there just, it takes me probably two cycles to get through the light on average. When you add a convenience store and other people making U-turns, it's only going to exacerbate the problem and make it, you know, substantially worse. I'm concerned about the hours and use of the project. The sale of alcohol from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week, seems excessive and is only agreed upon for one year. So if the ownership decides that they want to extend the hours, I don't really understand what is the criteria and what is the threshold to push it out to 11 o'clock. So I think that's probably a given, that that's going to happen. Nothing prohibits the CDM market from being leased to a 7-Eleven or Circle K down the road, which would be entirely inconsistent with the CDM feel. I mean, today's threshold of 3,000 square feet for 7-Eleven, if that's truly the case, could be 2,000 square feet tomorrow. I mean, I'm in real estate, things change all the time like that. I don't think we need two liquor convenience stores side by side, next door to each other. Corker Liquor has been a good neighbor and has reasonable hours at 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, six days a week, and closed on Saturdays. Putting another liquor convenience store side by side will guarantee that one of them will fail. The project talks about only adding 232 square feet of additional floor space. That doesn't take into account all the service bays being converted to retail space. So the conversion of the service bays into retail will just add additional, you know, obviously, retail and more people going in for stops. The loitering, the use and, the use and development will encourage loitering into the late hours. The proximity to the bus depot up Avocado and the bus stop right in front of the project already have loitering into the late hours, and a convenience store will only exacerbate the problem. In my opinion, this project, if built, will negatively impact the congestion, loitering, visual aesthetics, and quality of life of residents in CDM. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I'm Garen Yigunian, the owner of Corker Liquor. Wanted to bring up a few topics. One of them was a petition that I started. It was roughly 400 members of the community that were against the proposed plans by the applicant. I heard their feedbacks, and they wanted to email also the ones that were not able to get into the petition. My hours of operation are 9:00 to 9:00, close on Sundays. Part of that is because the community, and it's kind of a win-win for me. I don't want to open till 2:00 AM. Community's happy I'm not. I can easily, allowed by law, to open from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, but I'd wish not to get into that realm as far as bringing other elements into the area. A couple of the things I wanted to bring up was, if we're able to bring up the onsite proposed area, there was a few waivers of standards that I looked at. The total site required, from what I understood, was 18,643 feet, but the lot size itself was 13,853. So I thought there was a little bit more of a gap compared to, maybe I misread it into the packet, I'm not sure. The other factor is the landscape. The landscape is being reduced. The requirement is for 15%. The applicant is asking for less than 10%. I understand a business trying to improve, but at what point does these waivers of standards and other variances being altered wave a start of precedence for other projects in the future in Newport Beach? Maybe they can seek other waivers as well if this gets, you know, its way. And that's pretty much it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Nancy Van Otten, and I've lived in Irvine Terrace for over 30 years. And I would just like to reiterate what my neighbors have said in protests of this project going forward at this point in time without a careful review of all the considerations that have been raised tonight. And in addition to that, I'll raise one new one, which if you want to bring the environmental concerns into play, if we're truly going to examine this facility for being a good neighborhood fit, we should examine the contamination or possible contamination by the tanks at this time if we're going to do a major remodel.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Asano. I'm a resident of Harborview Homes. I have lived in the community for 35 years. My concerns of the expansion of the 76 station is the quality of life, the safety of our neighborhoods, and the congestion. I'm surprised with the police report that this, all the gas stations or the convenience markets have higher calls for service. We have the Chevron gas station at MacArthur and PCH. We have Papa's. We have two Rite-Aids right within a two-mile radius. We have Pavilions. We have Whole Foods. We will have CVS. We have Gelson's. We have Bristol Farms that closes at 11:00 PM. We do not need more saturation of alcohol sales late into the night. We don't need late-night transients, possible transients because of the hub. I live over there by the corner. I hear it every night. I see the people. I could hear people running through the, through the streets. It's not safe to be out late at night. We are early to bed, early to rise community. Please consider the community and the quality of life the constitution bears for us. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Bill Wonderly. I live on Pacific Drive, which where Avocado dead ends. Anyway, I think it'd be great to have a convenience store in the neighborhood. We don't, the Pavilions or Gelson's or Whole Foods, you have to drive, park a half a mile to get in to buy a dozen eggs or a quart of milk, so I'd love to see a little convenience store close to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My wife and I live in Irvine Terrace. She's had the property for nearly 50 years. And I understand the whole idea about moving forward, replacing things, upgrading, et cetera. But while we're at it, we're talking about upgrading a gasoline station at a point in time when there's a massive switch to electric cars. Is it really that important that we have another one? Because it may be better to dig up all that rotten tanks and get that property in shape for something that will in fact last. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bernie.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Bernie Saval said. This applicant has tried to get this project approved and worked on it for over three years. The applicant proposed two-story building that had some different architecture that wasn't really great. He reduced this down, cut the square footage in half, and now is in a better position. He got Planning Commission approval with the revised plans and conditions. The CDM Residents Association here, Debbie, sent in a letter of approval, and that covers all of CDM, the residents, a very respected organization, and I think this is important. The, this removes a repair shop and puts in a small, more- This removes a repair shop and puts in a small market, little store. I think the CDM Chamber of Commerce approved this project. I think that this makes it better actually for the neighborhood in improving this. If you disapprove it, you have this station here for this way. I think Mr. Blom brought up the idea that it could be contamination. I owned a service station before. It's contaminated and took years to revitalize the surface if you have a problem. Obviously, they don't have a problem now or they'd be out of business. I think this applicant worked on the Business Improvement District to try to help the neighborhood, the businesses. I think that's important to the community. And I think that the idea, I was a city councilman for 10 years and I never felt that the council was in a position, or legally or otherwise, to kind of pick what businesses should go in, what shouldn't go in, as long as they're approved in a zoning. So I think that's something you have to consider. Situation probably wouldn't be half as direct as if a person there isn't trying to protect his business. So I don't think that's your job as a council to protect somebody's business, as I think somebody already mentioned up there. So I think I'd ask to uphold the Planning Commission's position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Mortazavi, local business owner, resident. I think any money that improves our business district is welcome. I think we have too many empty storefronts and I think that will bring down our community down the road. I think Hameed has proven right now. Councilwoman Dixon said, will you change your time? He said yes. He's not out to ruin our community. He's only making it better. So as a business owner, that would maybe make our whole area better. I highly hope you guys approve it tonight and move on so we can focus on the homelessness issue. Thanks.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Lawrence Sherwin. I'm a resident here, relatively a newbie of only 23 years. I would like to discuss a little bit with the council that this is not about whether Hameed is really a good man or a bad man. It's about what business he wants to create. We've heard the city council say, we can't control what businesses go in. I beg to differ with you. We've had discussion about whether or not you can control colors. I beg to differ with you. If Hameed wanted to paint the building Pepto Bismol pink, it would not happen. If Hameed wanted to put in a hemp store, it would not happen. So we do have a responsibility to decide what businesses go into our community. I firmly believe that if you tried to put a pizza store next to another pizza store, it would have a lot of trouble going into this community. So putting a liquor store next to another liquor store makes no sense to me. I just beg that you'll just consider what other possibilities might be available in this community and try to make the community a better place by putting in things people need. And we don't need another alcohol store. I'm not opposed to alcohol. I think it's great stuff. But I think putting an alcohol store next to another alcohol store makes no sense at all. So I beg you consider, also, finally, there no traffic study was done. We've had four or five people tell us how bad the traffic is. Where's that study? I mean, you're our elected representatives. Let's try to protect all of us and do, you know, adequate research into what's available and what's going to happen to our communities. And so I request you delay voting on this until you can get some further information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Wilf Vog. Thank you for taking the time to have these hearings. I think it's important. Many years ago in the eighties, I owned five yogurt stores. You remember when they were big? One of them was the one that's still here. In fact, one of the only ones in this area is the one in Corona Del Mar. We sold, we bought it, we built it in the eighties. We went through this process, by the way, and I really, really feel for you. You know, we've been through this before and I remember how it was. My question has to do with, I walk a lot. In fact, every day I walk from Irvine Terrace over, next to the service station across the street. I go to the library quite a bit. I go to the Sculpture Garden, which is one of them. I love to see this building. I'm proud to be part of this community. I would have a look at the traffic situation because I think if I were going to open that little store and it's going to be open for 15, 16 hours a day, right? You have to have more than 300 trips to make a living there. You know, it would never work. So there's going to be many, many more trips than that to have that kind of store, to really make any money. And so I think a new traffic study to, and really a study that takes into consideration how much each ticket has to be, you know, how much money they have to take in to make a living. And how many cars are coming in right now, for example? Then adding all the convenience store trips, I think that would be a good idea. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Any other, anyone else want to speak on this item?
My name is Matt Larson. I'm a resident of CDM. I support the project. I think this corner needs an update and improvements. I can't imagine what else would work going in there that would be more favorable. I can think of a lot of less favorable. Hameed's come a long way in his revisions and I think that goes a lot to saying his intent and it looks a lot better than it did originally, no offense, but I think it's a great idea and a great thing for the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing unless there's someone else that's going to get up. This is your chance. All right, we'll bring it back up here. Any additional council comments? I think we have a few. Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank everyone that made it out here. It just shows how much you love this community and how concerned you are about it. And I want to address some of the issues that you guys brought up and I think they're important. When it comes to traffic and the U-turn going on right there, I think that is actually not a difficult fix for the city to take on. We control most of our signals. We can certainly make sure you don't wait for two lights there. Give me a nod, right? Yeah. Uh-huh. We can elongate those times there. We can make more cars turn around in a single sitting. We adjust it and monitor it frequently and so it's something we'll definitely look at. We're not trying to say, hey, traffic's not a problem. We want to address it in the city. It's very, very important to us. That's why we have our own amazing person that deals with just that. On the secondary side, interesting figure, if you want to think about it, 300 cars a day brings us close to $25,000 a day with the current price of fueling. So honestly, Hameed, if you're doing 300 cars a day, great job. You're killing it over there. But I don't think that's actually the case. I think the truth is, is that I turn around a lot there, too. We come from Big Canyon. I make the U-turn to go to Panini and pick up food, to go to CDM, to go to all the businesses that are part of our community. I don't think, I know some of you remember, but there used to be another Shell station in Corona Mar. Remember where Starbucks used to be? I think that was 1988. And the same issue came in front of this council and people were up in arms about replacing that station with a Starbucks, which was a very interesting conversation to even be talking about at this point. We're digging down, removing the tanks and getting the environmental impact report and that stayed vacant for almost two and a half years until we were able to build what we built there. It's never great to see something that we fear in the future and we think will ruin what we already have. I get it. We've grown up here. We love what we have. We don't want it to change. That's okay. But sometimes we need to rebuild it and that station is not great for this city. And maybe then it will spurn what we need for the rest of Corona Mar, which is investment and growth. And that doesn't mean we build up. I think that this applicant has shown nothing but due diligence. He's gone through a process that's longer than a lot of us would be willing to go through for our own homes. If you start talking about a five-year process to build your house while you're still paying rent and mortgage, that's, it's a lot of investment. And this doesn't say I want more liquor stores. But our job up here has nothing to do with what business goes where. It's not our choice and I've heard some people say it is. It's not. We can't decide if a pizza place goes next to another pizza place. We cannot. That's the choice of business, to choose business. And if you really want government to have that much hand in the development of your community, you want them choosing what business goes in what spot? What establishment takes over what thing? Well, that's a very different community than Newport Beach is. We're not Irvine. We're not a master-planned community that is very specific about it. We've grown because a lot of the people that grow their business here are eclectic and they do live here. You know, a lot of people are leaving California right now and I think it's a really interesting phenomenon. But the thing is, is they're going to these small towns and they're major, they're not services. They're not building the downtown. They're not creating a new environment where people want to go. They're buying real estate. Hameed lives here. He does care about it. And I get it, you guys don't like a liquor store gas station. I'm pretty sure if you asked any council member up here, they wouldn't rank that on their high level of what we want in Corona Mar. But what we do want is we want the buildings to be refurbished. We want them to look good. We want people to spend money remodeling them. Because that next assessment, that increases property tax. It increases the revenue coming into the city, increases the ability for us to do what we need to do here. And right now, nobody is sitting and looking at Corona Mar and saying it is the ideal market. It's the one where everyone wants to go. The investment's huge and it costs a lot to get through this process. As all of you have just sat here and seen, whether you agree with what I'm saying or not, and that's okay. We're supposed to have a difference of opinion on a lot of things, but in this one, I've seen someone that's done a severe amount of due diligence. They've walked through multiple times and changed their design, their plan. They're willing to even change things when they're talking to you guys now. That should show that they are a member of the community. This isn't some outside force trying to railroad Corona Mar or Newport Beach and put in something that will destroy us. This is a family that lives here that is trying to make their living and oftentimes the hardest decision is up here is that it doesn't matter what we agree with, it just matters what's right. And even if you don't agree with me, that's okay, but it's not our job to deny somebody the right to do business in this city because we don't like it. It's our job to decide if they have the right to do business in this city. Thank you.
Mr. Brenner.
I have a couple more questions and then I have a motion to make. Simone, on the leaking gas pumps, do we know if, I mean, not gas tanks, do we know if they're leaking there? And if so, when there are leaking tanks, do they only get switched out when the business is no longer a gas station? Or how does that get remediated?
So there's a couple of things. So gas tanks, the underground fuel tanks are highly regulated and the state has passed numerous laws over time that forced gas stations to replace their tanks. We did, Chelsea did some checking this morning and there was a review done in the nineties and a No Further Action Letter was issued 2002. So at this point, there's no, there's no issues with the tank at this point. So there's a No Further Action Letter that has been on file since 2002. So for us, there's no current crisis with those tanks.
Okay, thank you. And then another question for Tony, Brian. Where does this 300 car trips quantification come from? Is that something that the council, not this council, but some council in the past, has said to you, that's the criteria? And is it 300 more car trips to what is now currently in existence?
Correct. It is 300 additional or a net increase of 300 trips that would then trigger a traffic phasing ordinance study requirement. So that's, that's part of the traffic phasing ordinance. That's been in the municipal code for over 25 years. I mean, as long as I've been here. And that's been the requirement or the threshold at least for when a traffic study is required. And just to clarify something here, this project and the change to this project is not that this project generates 300 trips. It's that the net increase over what's there today, the net increase with the project, this new project would be less than 300 trips. So it's not like we're looking at a project that's only generating like less than 300 trips.
And is that something that council has discretion over? For instance, if you said it was going to be 200 trips and council said, we still would like a traffic study, can, is that something we can require?
It's the municipal code, so we would, you know, look to council. It would be a variation from the municipal code requirement. I haven't been in a situation where we've gone with something less than 300 trips and then done a traffic study. But again, what we're talking about when we say traffic study is we're talking about an analysis of levels of service at the intersection. We're not, that's what the traffic phasing ordinance is. It's not looking at operational issues as far as a project's concerned. Those are things that we look at when we get a project in for review, those types of issues of onsite circulation, et cetera.
And could that left turn off of PCH onto Avocado southbound, could that be extended? That length of that signal?
Yeah, we can definitely look at the timing at the intersection and see how we can make adjustments to that. You know, continue to make observations. I know I went into the, our Traffic Management Center a number of times over the last couple of weeks, just watched it here and there, different times of the day, morning peak, midday, afternoon, et cetera, to see what was actually happening. So we can make adjustments to address that.
I know it does back up there sometimes. Okay, let's see. I have, I've been asking Tony a couple of times about the intersection of Jamboree and PCH, where the cars make a right turn going north on PCH and then are trying to get over to make a left turn into Park Newport. And that's what one of the ladies here was talking about today, how when the cars make a right off of MacArthur and they're trying to get over far enough to make a left turn, it's really just impossible when the oncoming traffic has a green light. So isn't there any way that we can control that merging of traffic all being, having a green light at the same time?
It's a free right turn movement from MacArthur onto Coast Highway, so we're not going to be able to control that free right movement. And we wouldn't want to because it's such a very heavy turn movement. And that's the reason why it's free movement. So they're going to come when they do. And to control Coast Highway at MacArthur, to allow for movements to turn off of MacArthur, you'd get continuous right turn movements all day long. It'd be difficult to make that control for that. So, and then that's another thing that we watched on the cameras as well was, you know, how many people are making that right turn and working their way across. I'm sure that the residents are doing it every day. I can't see that, say that I saw it happen very often at all, but again, it's going to be another thing that we'll watch and monitor and the timing at the intersection.
I do go straight north on PCH all the time and it happens frequently. There are people trying to get over to make a left turn at both Jamboree and MacArthur. So it's, you really have to drive defensively because of that. Okay, I think those are my questions. I do have a motion to make. I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the Planning Commission and staff recommendations for approval with the following conditions. That alcohol sales be limited to 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Striking the condition that requires our Community Development Director and Police Chief to evaluate after one year whether these hours can be extended. Owner would need to apply for the change and go through the normal process Owner would need to apply for the change and go through the normal process, which includes appearing before the Planning Commission and allowing opportunity for public input if, if he wanted to make that change in hours. I support the modification on the south side of the building to eliminate the setback in order to remove the eyesore of the old auto parts that are stacked up there along the side of the gas station between Corker and the 76. And also eliminate the possibility of the homeless individuals utilizing that space between the two buildings there. So, I think we'd be better off with an enclosed space there. And I support the Planning Commission condition that the owner work with staff to create the less contemporary design. I, this design is, is much better than the first one that we saw. And Hamed brought that to the Corona del Mar bid about three years ago, and he got a lot of feedback from the bid members about that very contemporary design. So, this is sort of the third iteration of that. And I, I would like to include that the canopy matched the design of the building. And I, I'd like to add another condition, that I would request that we implement for any business that goes in anywhere in Newport Beach, that we have a condition that the owner is responsible for keeping the adjacent sidewalks clean. As Noah Blum mentioned in his remarks several weeks ago, that it's up to the owners of the businesses, and it really, it's, it's like the old days when the little Italian market owner went out and swept his sidewalk in the beginning of the day. And the Matthew that owns the oil company on Babo Island still does that today, where he goes out and he washes his sidewalk and he sweeps his sidewalk in front of his building. So, I'd like to see that as a continuing condition that we approve in the future for businesses. And that's it.
But it's not part of this, this condition?
Yeah, I think we could start here.
Yeah. So, any condition has to be reasonably related to the project itself. I'm not sure that's reasonably related. That might be something we can tackle kind of on a global scale, but not on an individual project like this.
We can, we can take that one next, then, not tonight.
Go ahead. Oh, all right. I, can I speak?
Yes.
I'd like to second that motion, but I'd like to make a substitute friendly amendment, if I may. I heard a lot, and I certainly read a lot, in the letters that came in, and the, the overwhelming preponderance of letters are objecting to the two liquor stores, to alcohol retail establishments. And that concerns me. I love my margaritas and my wine, but I just think that we are asking for trouble when we know that the calls for service for these type of facilities is just waiting to happen. I want to ask Simone on, on that point, and I'll get back to my substitute motion. Simone, just educate us, me, do all convenience stores attached to gasoline sales, do they always sell alcohol?
No, as, as far as always, it's an absolute no, they don't.
So, what, so what drives their revenue model, their business model?
It, it's, it's a number of different things. The ones that don't have alcohol, sometimes they would have some anchor tenant, sometimes like the bigger ones would have like a Subway indoors. Others sell a lot of, you know, water, soft drinks, Gatorade, just kind of, just the, the bottle industry is huge. And so, that, that seems to be what I've seen in different areas. So, there's always some type of anchor that the, the tenant sells, and, and sometimes they, they do sell Lotto tickets.
Lotto ticket, do we?
Lotto tickets. We don't regulate it, that's Lotto tickets, right.
We don't have any prohibition on Lotto tickets?
No, no. And the other, the other uses too, that we've seen, some of the liquor stations have start to implement car washes. So, that's the other anchor that they start to implement.
So, my substitute motion is to support everything that Councilmember Brenner just said, but to see if it would, see the acceptance by the colleagues here, to have listened to the people, to not have the alcohol and everything else, have Lotto tickets, whatever, and actually have extended hours. I would certainly support extended hours to 11:00 or midnight for the retail, but to compensate for the loss, everybody wants alcohol because of, of the, the margins that it creates. I do want to, does someone have my slides that I'd asked John Pope? Do you have access to those slides? I'd ask him to set up. Would you mind pulling those up? So, this, this is a little slideshow of the alcohol litter problem. I think there's several, if you could scroll through them. This is on the gas station, service station property, applicant's property.
So, there's only two slides?
Okay. So, this is what we're dealing, this is what is currently happening, and it's just the leaves, the maintenance, the keeping it clean is currently a challenge. So, to add to that, to exacerbate this problem, I would like to have that substitute motion. Would you accept a friendly substitute motion?
Councilmember Dixon, just want to be clear, the substitute motion was the removal of alcohol?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, yes, thank you.
What I don't want to do is threaten the original motion if the rest of the council doesn't vote for this with the friendly amendment. So, should it be a separate motion?
You could make it as a substitute motion.
A substitute motion so that we can vote on this first, and then, if this is not acceptable to the council, then vote on the other motion that I made.
Do we vote now?
As a point of order, you, you haven't made a substitute motion yet, and there hasn't been a second, so there'd be nothing to vote on.
Amendment, you need to remake the motion, get a second.
So, I think the substitute motion, you were basically taking Councilmember Brenner's motion, except for you're taking alcohol out of it.
Correct.
Right? And then you need a second.
All right.
I'll second it for a vote.
I think, I think Mr. Mayor is next in the queue on that one.
Yep. Oh, Yolanda, my colleague.
Yeah, thanks. So, when we're working through projects, there's, you know, there is a lot of information that's provided to us, and one of the things that when we're working through, especially when we're dealing with alcohol beverage sales offsite, we always have a review by our police department. That is not a rubber stamp, and it's actually reviewed by someone who does this on a regular basis across our entire city. And multiple times in our staff report, it's been said that the police department has reviewed the proposed use, including the Type 20 alcohol beverage license, which is not a liquor license, it's, it's for beer and wine. And the, the statement is, the police department has no objection to this. We, we up in the dais, we, we need to be taking the input from folks who do this on a regular basis as a, as a matter of course, as, who are experts in the field. We do that with Tony Bryne on traffic, and we do that with our police department when we're working through the issues dealing with alcohol. When the police department says they have no objection to, to something, I'm going to take them at their word, that they have no objection to the alcohol when it comes to beer and wine. And that, that matters, because we do need to, to, to the point of one of the speakers, we do set standards for a whole bunch of different businesses. So, we, we don't, we don't regulate who asks us to put something on a particular site, but we do get to apply standards when we are working that through. And so, the important thing to, to note are the findings that we need to be ultimately trying to work through and, and making, because it's sort, it's, it's sort of how you back into the issue on a particular site anyway. And as far as the findings are, are made here, that's, that's the, that's the important thing, because we need to be consistent across the board when we're working through with our property owners. Because when we're working this through and we're trying to find those particular standards, people should expect us to apply those standards and expect that we are going to apply them even-handedly. And then, when it comes to the Planning Commission, then ultimately, if it gets to us, we need to be applying that consistently to a particular property. So, the findings that we are asked to be making, there are only a couple of variances when it comes to this. And those variances, at the end of the day, when we're trying to make those decisions, I'd asked the, I'd set forward those standards, and I asked for a discussion about how those standards would play out in this. And I think Councilmember Brenner identified a handful of those standards and how they were met by the variance requests. Those variance requests are frankly not very difficult to meet in the, in a particular project like this, because when they're dealing with a particular site size, and we, you know, we're looking at the zero lot line issues, and we're trying to make a deci- decision, when we're trying to make a decision, and it's, the standard is the strict compliance with the standards, it's not necessary to achieve the purpose and intent of this section, that the project possesses compensating design and development features that offset impacts associated with modification or waiver of the standards, and that the overall site plan and architectural design is consistent with our automobile service stations and washing. I think we've gotten there. And so, take, you know, all the, all the concerns taken into account, I understood completely. But when we're trying to work through the property rights of this particular person, or this particular business, I mean, and we know what the standards are that we needed to make a finding of, I understand completely how the Planning Commission got there at a six-one vote. And I would vote to be consistent with the Planning Commission on this. I understand the conditions of the 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and trying to find a canopy that matches as closely as it would to, you know, to this. So, with those conditions, I would support it, but as, in a substitute motion, given what the police department has said, I can't support that substitute motion, but I would support Councilmember Brenner's motion. Excuse me, original motion.
Mr. Muldoon.
Yeah, I feel the same way as Councilman O'Neill. So, we can substitute the substitute, or we could vote on the substitute, whatever's most friendly process for us to go through, Mr. Mayor.
It sounds very familiar.
Yeah, so I, I'm fine with calling a question.
Can I just ask a quick question? The police is, is Councilmember Joe here, is Wendy Joe here? Not Councilmember, is Officer Wendy Joe here? No. To answer the staff report on the police. A resident mentioned that the data was on the police on the incident report was dated in August, and they're, so now it's November. I just wondered if that was relevant data?
Yeah, that's the most up-to-date data that we have, is the August.
The report from the police department?
No.
No. So, I mean, is our information correct from the police in terms of the incidents? They reported up through August, and now it's been increased, I mean, 14, if my, if I heard that resident correctly, 1,400 calls for service in the past 12 months? I don't know. Can we validate that?
We, we don't have any further data than what's in the staff report. Councilmember Dixon.
How many, do you have there, how many calls for service to that date in August?
We'll, we'll spend some time looking it up.
At that location?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, let us look in, look into that a little bit.
That's really all my concern. I mean, I, I appreciate the management capability of this, but, I mean, just, why have to have two retail operations adjacent to one another when we already have issues related to it? I just think it's asking for problems, and it's problematic. But I'll call for the vote as well.
Ms. Brenner, would you mind going over right now, as you understand it, your motion?
Or my motion?
Were you voting on the substitute motion?
We need to vote on Diane's first.
All right. What we're voting on.
Okay. Should I tell you what my motion in, well, it's, okay. My motion is that we move forward with the Planning Commission's staff recommendation for approval with the following conditions: alcohol sales hours from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., striking the condition that requires our community development director and police chief to evaluate after one year whether those hours can be extended. Owner would need to apply for the change and go through the process, including Planning Commission, where there is an opportunity for the public to be heard. I support the modification for the setback relief, because I believe it helps to make the eyesore of the old auto parts that you can see from now over the fence. It makes that go away, and it also prevents utilizing that space between buildings for homeless or transient use. I support the Planning Commission condition that the owner work with the staff to create the less contemporary design. And I wanted to include that we have the, would like the canopy to match the design of the building.
And then the substitute motion was basically to remove the alcohol piece
Correct.
From the project. And you'd be voting on the substitute motion first.
With Mayor Avery, Mayor Pro Tem Muldoon, Councilmembers Blom and Duffield voting no, the motion fails four-two.
No, not Duffield.
And now you'll be voting on the original motion that was presented by Councilmember
The motion carries unanimously six-zero.
All right, moving on to item 26, ordinance number 202124, amendment to the Newport Place Plan Community PC 11. Do any council members have a conflict to announce related to this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict related to my interest in the Pacific Club. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Avery, City Councilmembers. So, this item is just a, an amendment to the Newport Place Plan Community text. The, the text is being amended to allow more of the kind of that Mitzvah use. We, it went through the Planning Commission, there was no opposition to the project, no public comment to the project. It's just an amendment to some zoning language that we have to allow this new, new look skin. David Lee can make a presentation if you'd like, if, other than that, then that's pretty much the extent of the presentation. Okay.
All right. If we have no questions from council, I'll close the public hearing. We want to hear from public comments. Any public comments on this issue, item number 26? Seeing none? Okay, thank you. Your second? Great.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you.
The motion Diane seconded. Okay, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2021-24, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, approving an amendment to the Newport Place Plan Community PC 11, number PD 2011-1, to change the land use designation from restaurant site one to general commercial site eight for property located at 4241 MacArthur Boulevard. The motion carries unanimously six-zero. Am I, the vote for 25, I accidentally said Councilmember Duffield instead of Councilmember Blom.
All right.
Or O'Neill.
All right, moving on to item 27, the annual review of zoning agreement for Sierra by the Sea.
This is an annual review based on the zoning agreement. There's, there's no change from the last year. You review this every year. Melinda Whalen is here, she's the staff planner that handles this project, but happy to answer any questions from the council.
Hey, do we have any questions up here?
I just have one.
Joey?
I have one. How do we, how do we get the other operators of group homes in the community to become the good citizens that this one has become since the lawsuit?
So, we're, we're definitely off to the right track, where we're starting to have that dialogue with, with all our operators. And, you know, there's some good operators that have their own rules, house rules, and we want to use that as a template as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dixon.
Oh, well, just to follow up on that, as I was going to say the same thing. So, as long as I've been on the council, Sierra by the Sea has gone through the same annual pr- as I've been on the council, Sierra by the Sea has gone through the same annual process, and they have passed every time. There have been no reported code violations or incidences that merited council action or public review. So I would just like to note that when we have, see an annual review of a good operator like this, that this is, sets a role model, if you will, for the community. So I'll make a motion to support. Is there, do we have to support this? Is that, we receive and file? I guess that's all this is, right?
No.
There's one finding to be made, so just staff recommendation.
Yeah, approve staff recommendation, I motion to approve staff recommendation.
And I'll second.
Okay, do we have any public comments on this? Seeing none? Close the public hearing. Ready to vote?
The motion carries unanimously seven-zero.
Okay, we're moving on to current business. Item 28, ordinance number 2021-25, solid waste and convertible material container, bulky item requirements.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'll start it from over here, and then I'll turn it over to Micah Martin. This is the next phase of our refuge update. As you know, we've been going through the various components, and tonight we have some code modifications for you in relationship to the new state laws. So our deputy director, Micah Martin, is on the other side and be doing a staff presentation for you, and take any questions in there. Micah, you're set up, your clicker's right there.
Okay, so, good evening, councilmembers, public staff. Glad to be with you here tonight on this topic. As Dave mentioned, this is another step in our process in coming into compliance with state mandates. And this is just a really quick glance again at what those state mandates are, and these code revision here is tonight are specifically applied towards our compliance towards SB 1383, which is coming into an effect in January of 2022. So with these changes, the first change is the revision to Chapter 6.06, which is our state mandated municipal solid waste diversion programs. And this is the part that brings us into compliance with SB 1383 effective January 2020. Part of our plan that we've been working on since January of 2020 was to, you know, bring us into compliance with these upcoming state mandates, and that's where we're at here today. With this code revision, this puts us in a position where we've achieved a key piece of that legislation requirement in making sure our municipal code has been updated to be able to provide the type of program that CalRecycle is asking us to provide. And with this, it gives us the enforcement mechanism that we need in order to ensure that the program is being complied with per these regulations. All right, one last piece of this is the, it also establishes a food recovery program, and that's to help feed people in need. And that's a, that's a new component to this, something that the city doesn't currently have in place, and that's just an additional benefit to the compliance with SB 1383. And this is, this is the program we're talking about, this is the three-card system, where we have the blue recycling cart, the green organics recycling, and the black solid waste that goes to the landfill. So by having this program in place, that's what's helping us achieve our compliance with the state mandates. The next code revision is to 6.04. This would require all carts that are available for pickup be containerized. And we've talked about this before, this making sure that all the trash makes it into the car, and it's in the cart, sourced separated at the curb like it's intended to be for collection. This helps us with our automation system, making sure the trucks are automated, they're able to pick up the cans, dump them into the truck efficiently. It improves the program efficiency, it improves the sanitation of our streets and alleys by deterring the, you know, the pest environments, preventing unsightly loose and blowing around trash and debris in our alleys and our streets. And ultimately, it produces a cost savings in our negotiation process with CRNR for the amended contract by being able to make an efficient program. So this is kind of what it looks like today with our current program, and why this change is so important. It's really important that we get this trash collected properly, put into the proper bins, sourced separated, so we know that everything that can be recycled is going into the recycle bin. And we're reducing the amount of labor required, makes the routes more efficient, and less time spent collecting the trash. Here's, just a little bit further on that, talking about the source separation and containerization. In that picture there on the right, you can see that this may have the appearance of being containerized, but it's still loose trash, and so we're pulling out the can, you can't grab that cart and tip it into the truck. So it's important that the right carts and the right size of carts are in the right places.
Mike, can I interrupt just a second? If you go back one slide, just so the council and the audience understands, there are lots of options built in our refuge system, so people can order extra carts or have carts to make sure they have room for it. In this picture alone, you see some commercial and construction debris. Those contractors need to order dumpsters and put that in a dumpster instead of having people pick it up and haul it off at the city's cost. There's also bulky item pickups in the ordinance too that allows people who have a lot of material and have it picked up for it. So there are other options, but we really need to get that material into the automated system and actually sorted and taken care of versus left loose in the street like this. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. And then lastly, there's a revision to Chapter 14.17, and this is referring to water-efficient landscaping. So this is really a key piece, because this kind of helps bring into focus the overall effort of organic recycling. You know, we do this curbside source separation of our organic material, which is food waste and green waste. Then that gets hauled away to a processing facility and gets processed as compost. And now with the revision to this, this is putting a requirement in our landscaping ordinance that that compostable material is now being utilized in our landscaping practices. So this helps, this implements what's called the Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, and it sets the standards for new development and retrofitted landscape projects. And it requires them to have the option of composting as part of those project requirements. So that, by having that, that improves our water conservation, our water savings, erosion control, stormwater management, and also even provides a habitat for beneficial insects and other wildlife. So it's kind of a nice piece, because it helps really bring in the focus of full circle concept of why this recycling is so important, and what happens to that organic material once it's been processed and what it's done with. And this just kind of helps bring, you know, a clearer picture of that. You see the two materials that come out of organic recycling, which is compost and mulch. And here's their real-world application and how this is used. You see the planting of the median on the left there, they put that, the compost in with the plants when they plant them into the medium, and that's for good health, for the plants, for them to grow well. And then the picture on the right is mulch, that's a top surface application, which is a landscape enhancement. So this is really kind of the end product of our efforts in our organic recycling process.
Great, Ms. Dixon.
Micah, just a quick question. What's the cycle? So it's picked up from the resident's home, and then CRNR does the compost process, production process, and then the city would purchase this from another supplier? How does that work?
Well, so.
What's the cycle of life there?
You know, all cities in the state of California are required to do this, so the composting material may be coming from, you know, any other.
Anywhere, but we're all contributing, all cities are.
We're all contributing, right.
That's fine, okay, thanks.
And just to note, when the contract comes forward with the new hauler contract, there is actually a discounted price in there for us to buy mulch from, this is CRNR, they produce it, and we'll get a better price in bulk from them, but it's in the contract.
Does this program reduce effort costs for the vendors? In other words, they're not picking up boxes off the streets?
Right.
You know, everything's kind of a little more under control?
Yeah, that's correct. That's, you know, one of the slides further back, we're talking about the efficiencies that it creates with containerization. You know, right now, as it currently stands, with all that material and debris on the ground, the driver has to get out of the truck, pick it all up,
Right.
put it in the cart, service the cart multiple times, but with this new system, it'll all be in the cart, and he doesn't have to get out of the truck, he just tips the cart into the truck and moves on. So it creates a ton of efficiency just in the process alone.
So we see that in some contract eventually?
That's part of the negotiations that the council working against groups and working with CRNR on, that they gave us a price based on full automation like most cities. So it is an important element, not only is it required in the state mandate that things have to be separated in the cart, but it will increase ours cost savings by allowing it through the contract on automation.
And then there will be an introduction of a cost per can, for additional cans?
There is, again, getting ahead of ourselves, we'll be bringing the contract to you as soon as that's done, I'm guessing the first meeting in January, but in there is a cost per can, because there's, as you know, our charter allows the residents typical free refuge from the city, but as we've shown through the years, there's people abuse this, people have a lot of carts, they're going way beyond the typical family. So we've, we've come up with a volume that's very fair for the residents, beyond that, they would pay a small charge.
Okay.
Something like six bucks a month for a cart.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Okay. So with that, this creates an opportunity just to kind of show what we've achieved so far in getting into compliance, and kind of what's left to do, but how these key, these ordinance changes are such a key piece in what we're doing. So there's some further residential modifications coming forward that these ordinances help us achieve. The one of them, again, is the, is the three-card system, and we've been working on this already. We've, since last time we talked, we've got blue-top recycling carts delivered to every resident now. So every resident who didn't have a blue-top recycling cart now has one. And there's still some logistics with right sizing the carts for people, making sure they got the right size of cart that they need, but we've achieved a, part of our goal already, and obviously the next step is to get the green cart rolled out, and that'll be happening in January. And then, of course, with the black carts, we could continue to work with residents on right sizing, the right-sized carts for them, so that's what this next slide, next slide is here. It shows the different cart sizes that are available as a variety of options for the residents to get, you know, the cart that's best for them. So some of the space constrained areas, they may want to go with a smaller-sized cart, some of the bigger neighborhoods, like, you know, the Port Streets or Newport Coast, may benefit more from the larger-sized carts, but we're presenting these a variety of options, you know, to the residents even now, so that they can make sure they have the right cart system in place that works best for them. And then one thing that'll be coming forward in our, in our next meeting is we have some route changes that we need to focus on and do, and that's to create further efficiency. And as you can see from this map, specifically in the Newport Coast area or in East Bluff, you can see those different colored dots, those represent, you know, different days of collection. So you can see Newport Coast, every day of the week practically, there's a trash truck driving through the neighborhoods there to collect trash. Same over in East Bluff, even that small neighborhood there, there's still a lot of, a lot of trucks servicing that area. And, you know, this is probably inherited from having the two different contracts, from, you know, the way that our refuge system used to be handled years ago when it was done by the city. It never has really been, you know, cleanly redefined, and so we're really focusing on that now, and we need to make some route changes to create a better, efficient system here. And this will help balance out the loads, you know, over on the peninsula, right now there's seven trucks that, that collect on a Monday, but then on Fridays, we have maybe only two trucks. And so we want to balance that out, where we have a consistent number of trucks on a daily basis servicing the neighborhoods in a proper fashion. So that'll be coming forward. And this is just to kind of just further elaborate as to why these route changes are so important and why they're needed. And, you know, we talked about the efficiency that comes with that, but beginning in February, tentatively, if the contract's approved, there'll be implemented this revised route to better service residents in a more efficient and less disruptive manner. But this is needed to service that three-card system. See, we don't have that three-card system now, but once that's implemented, you know, each one of those carts goes to a different place. One goes to, you know, organics recycling, the other goes to a recycling facility, the other goes to the landfill. So that's three different trucks going to three different places. So that all has to be worked into the system, and that's, that's another reason why the route change is so important. But ultimately, it's intended to help balance out the loads, ensure that all daily routes can be collected on time, and it increases safety by reducing the number of miles traveled by day for the collection trucks, and it also even reduces their left turns. It also reduces the total number of daily truck routes, and it further avoids high traffic in congestion areas, and it also reduces noise, traffic, and emissions for residents and businesses. So with these route changes, many residents will have their collection day adjusted as a result of this reroute. So in the, in the next meeting, when we bring the resolution forward, we'll be able to help further define that and work on a outreach and education plan to inform the residents of, of how that's going to look. And so just in summary, what to expect in the next few months, if this gets approved here tonight, we'll move forward with the second reading of the ordinance change, will also have a resolution for the street sweeping days to better align with the necessary route changes. We're hoping to bring forward the amended contract in the first meeting in January, and then if that happens and works out okay by, between January and April, we'll have our full program rollout. So that's how things are looking over the next few months. So that's the end of the presentation. I can answer any questions?
Thank you very much. Any comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Micah, and Public Works and Dave. I mean, this has been, and Councilmember Brenner and Mr. O'Neal and myself have been on the ad hoc committee for all these years to move this forward. So it's a rather dry presentation, but there's a lot going on, and I look forward at the November 30th meeting. I see Tara sitting out there, we'll see the communication plan, that, will we present that so the community has a chance to see visually what's going to happen instead of a dry, black-and-white PowerPoint?
So currently, right now, we are set to have the second reading of this changes tonight. The contract won't be ready for your review and approval till January.
So we won't do the November 30th meeting?
We're not planning on it right now.
Oh, because that was in the slide.
And then because of our December schedule, there's no real meeting, so the first opportunity is January.
All right, so that's when we'll see the rollout of the communication plan?
Yep.
Okay. And the program starts in January?
Into January through April, we'll start the route changes.
I know, so I'm just focused on the fact that we're approving it, and it's at the meeting in January, and that will start February 1st, didn't we say that?
I think we did originally, but with the change going into January, we'll look at making sure we have the appropriate lead time for people, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
And we'll be starting some of that communication now, we actually already have been, and we'll, we'll do as much communication as is appropriate now, leading into the contract approval, so that residents will know what's coming.
Good, okay, good, very good, well, very good, and appreciate all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
We had talked about that there are biodegradable trash bags that you can buy, and I didn't know about that early enough, and went to Costco, and I now have plenty of the others to last the rest of my life. So can we get notice out maybe on Newport Beach TV and flyers at the library and things like that, telling people that this is an option to buy these biodegradable trash bags?
We can surely include that in the message. A lot of it has to do with, we're talking about kitchen pails coming up and smaller bags to collect that, so we'll include that in the message.
Thank you.
Okay, no further comment? Yep.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation?
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I appreciate that Newport Beach, like all other cities in California, has to enact something to be in compliance with SB 1383 by January 1st. This particular proposal I found quite confusing. Among other things, you have here an Exhibit A that looks like it's an entirely revised chapter of our municipal code, but that's not actually what it is, this is just snippets out of the code that are being changed. While there's other parts that you're not seeing, they're not being changed. That's confusing. If you try to read the definitions, they're very tangled, convoluted, inconsistent with one another, impossible to follow. You could not tell from this ordinance, as Micah was indicating, that the city is planning to have a three-card system that is not in here anywhere that I can tell. Instead, I find a passage that says, which is left over from the existing code, that the city will have different programs in different parts of the city, and it's up to the city manager to figure out kind of the details. That's rather like in zoning, if you, the council, just passed an ordinance that said we want zoning in our city to have orderly development, and we'll leave it up to the staff to figure out how things are zoned. Kind of the same sort of laissez-faire approach to that, which would leave the public out of the decision-making as they have been, since this has all been going through this working group that the public does not have a chance to interact with. Had it been the council, not through a contract, which we hear is coming up, but in this ordinance, if you were requiring the residents to have a three- if you were requiring the residents to have a three cart system, as I understand the CalRecycle rules, that would be what's called a performance-based collection system. If you have 90% of the residents on a three cart system, and it would eliminate the need for the ordinance to have the enforcement provisions, where people will be looking through their trash to see that's properly there. So if you actually want that, I'm wondering why you're not doing it in the ordinance, to make it a performance-based ordinance. And as you know, I also have a concern. It may take me longer than a minute to explain this. You have a large audience here also wanting to speak, I see. I have a real concern with our voter enacted 60-year-old ordinance requiring you, the council, and the city staff to provide the residents with free curbside trash collection. You could ask us to change that, but you have not. And as long as you do not, I'm not sure that the city has the authority to limit how much, as good an idea as that may be, that people can put out, and now charge them for the privilege of putting out the containers. And I also do not think it's clear that you have any authority now to impose the recycling fee. That was not originally intended as anything other than a convenience fee, so that back in the 1990s, when the city people were collecting the, the residents' own containers, they were paying a small fee so somebody would, else would separate the recoverable material from the non-recoverable. Now you're asking the residents to do the separation, and there's no reason or justification for charging them a recycling fee when their voter enacted ordinance says that you must provide them with free curbside trash collection. Thank you. Oh, oh, and I did today receive my blue topped recycling container with a bent, broken top, so that I cannot comply with the ordinance to keep it closed unless I put a weight on it, which is violating another part of the code. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Your initial comments on this item lifted my spirits for about three seconds. It was all downhill after that, but thank you. All right. So we'll close the public hearing if there's no more public comment. And we have a motion and a second up there. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance 2021-25, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending chapter 6.04 Garbage Refues and Cuttings, chapter 6.06 State Mandated Municipal Solid Waste Diversion Programs, and chapter 14.17 Water Efficient Landscaping of the Newport Beach Municipal Code Necessary to Implement Senate Bill 1383 Short-lived Climate Pollutin Reduction Act of 2016 State Mandates. The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at this meeting, at either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right. Any motions for reconsideration? Hearing none, we are adjourned.